I'd like to call the Adams County Board Supervisor Meeting to your order and ask Mr. Brad Purdwell to listen in a prayer and we'll set a pledge in unison.
Little say, let us bow his. O wise eternal Father, we thank you today, O God, we thank you for allowing us to see another year. And Father, we just come here, God, asking you, O God, to look over our elected officials that you appointed, O God, for this county. And Father, we ask, O God, that you continue to keep them safe. Father, continue to give them wisdom and strength and courage, O God, to lead your people. And Father, we just pray, O God, that you continue to allow them, O God, to make those decisions, O God, for your people. And Father, we ask that you continue to equip them. Father, we want to pray for our first responders, our hospitals, our schools this year, O God. Father, continue to keep them safe. Father, we want to pray for all our new incoming employees, O God. Father, we ask, O God, that you continue to strengthen them, O God, and continue to give them the leadership that they need. And Father, we pray for our finances in this county. We claim that the finance is going to be great this year. And Father, we just praying for businesses to come into this, this county, O God, and we ask for an increase. And Father, we name it and we claim it. Father, we just thank you in the name of Jesus, that our God's here to say, amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, as we begin to testify, we declare the state of America into a republic for which it stands, one nation, united in God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this point, I'd like to open the floor for nominations for President of the Adams County Board Supervisors for a term of one year. Kevin Wilson.
I'll nominate Superintendent Kevin Wilson.
All right, we'll, we'll close the, the floor for nominations. And so I need a motion to appoint Kevin Wilson to the President of Adams County Board Supervisors for a term of one year. A motion by Supervisor Middleton, second by Supervisor Gaines. All those in favor? Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, the motion carries. Now we need to open the floor for nominations for Vice President of the Adams County Board Supervisors for a term of one year.
Anybody? I nominate Wes Middleton.
Okay. We have a nomination for Supervisor Middleton for Vice President of the Board for a term of one year. On second. Okay. No further nominations. We'll close the floor for nominations. I need a motion to appoint Supervisor Wes Middleton for Vice President for the term of one year for the Adams County Board Supervisors. I'm looking motion, okay?
Say.
Okay. Then a motion by Supervisor Hutchins, second by Supervisor Wilson. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. And now I'll turn the meeting over to the new president. Congratulations Supervisor Wilson. Thanks Brother Gaines.
Yes, I mean to run it.
Thank my fellow supervisors for having enough confidence in me to carry this position on. Okay, so the next step, we're gonna appoint.
Mediate.
We will form. Okay. Go back to Billings.
Mediate through the minutes.
Nothing. All right, we need to approve the minutes for December of twenty-three.
I make a motion to approve the minutes for December twenty-three.
First by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Hutchins. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, discussions?
Yes, sir.
Ricky Gray?
Hey, do you remember the, at the end where you say, look at exhibit whatever, whatever? I still don't have that information. It's kind of hard for me to approve minutes when I don't know what I'm approving.
So, we are working on getting on the program that I use. Y'all will be able to actually get into it and look at it from your computers. So, we're working on getting that so that way you've got that access to be able to look at all of that.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Need a motion to approve the documents.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Gaines, moved second by Angela. Any discussion?
This president and Board, we have gone on here, Elaine Meyer. And he's not with us anymore. So, do that transfer to? No, it don't transfer to him because we seen on there where they charging for Judge Barker too.
Right.
So.
We'll check the term on that.
And.
Can you give me that, um, that date for that, uh, docket that, that's on?
Okay, the date effective is one fourth, two thousand and twenty-four. And you need to claim number?
Yes, sir.
Claim number is eleven seventy-nine.
I'll email them right away.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so, motion carries. All right, we're gonna go to the appointments. All right, I need a motion to appoint Scott Slower, Board Attorney, for a one-year term.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Gaines.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hutchins. All in favor? Aye. Aye, it's had it. Need a motion to appoint Stephanie Barson for County Administrator. For one-year term.
Second.
Moved by Angela Hutchins, second by Mr. Gaines. All in favor? Congratulations. Motion to appoint Keke Martin as County Comptroller. Moved by Angela Hutchins, second by Mr. Gaines. All in favor? Aye, it's had it. Motion to appoint Robbie Dollar as County Road Manager.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Hutchins. All in favor? Aye, it's had it. I know he's happy, look. Motion to appoint Darryl Smith as County Volunteer Fire Coordinator.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Gaines. Second by Mr. Middleton. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion to appoint George Forrest, County Engineer.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Gaines. Second by Ms. Hutchins. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to appoint Vernon Johnson as Justice Court Administrator. Need a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Gaines. I'll second him. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, I need a motion to County Administrative Point.
The County Administrative Point will point these.
Okay.
Over.
Okay.
I call for a motion to appoint Nina Price as first in part.
So moved. Second.
I have this second motion, I mean, if this motion.
Motion is second.
Second.
I'm giving, I carry the motion.
And he carries the motion, he's second, and now we get rid of both.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion favor? I call for a motion to appoint Claudia White as the first in part.
So moved.
Second. Uh, motion by Gaines, second by Hutchins. Uh, any news? Uh, motion, I mean, motion here. Motion to appoint Claudia O'Neil as the first in part. So moved.
Second.
Uh, motion made by Hutchins, second by Gaines. Any opposed? Motion here. Thank you.
We vote.
He's an afternoon nippers.
All right, that's all we need to do on the appointment. Go back to, uh, approve monthly financial reports for the Adams County Sheriff's Office.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Hutchins. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Prove financial reports for chance report.
So moved.
Angela.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gaines. All in favor?
Aye.
A monthly financial report for Preston, uh, report.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Middleton. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, down to special presentations, if any. Anybody here for a special presentation? Yes, sir.
I recently addressed the board.
Public comments, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
You got, you got a special presentation, Mr.?
Good morning, board, happy meeting everybody inside my voice. Uh, we do have one special presentation. I know we, uh, what's it, back in July? Back in July, we participated, uh, in helping, uh, some cyclists raise money, uh, for special cause. And I think the board allowed us to use the safe room, uh, for them to use safe room. Uh, so that group, uh, ends of the earth cycle, uh, is thankful for the Adams County community safe room. Uh, our participation in twenty thousand, two thousand, twenty-three magistrate bike ride helped raise forty-seven thousand dollars plus to bring transformations to the youth of Ukraine, uh, in Jesus's name. Uh, it's, it's called the Pray, Pelo, Repeat. And they just sent us a plaque, uh, to the Adams County Board of Supervisors. They were just, thank y'all for doing. We had this in the safe room, the first three times we had pressure.
Well, that was for a really good cause. Appreciate all those guys riding for that. That, um, that's impressive. How, how far did they ride?
I would, I think the millions, I would, yeah, further than that.
That's dedication. Thank them on our behalf. All right. That's all for special presentations. Got county business, uh, Jarque Battey, any tea concern?
You got a fan?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you find?
Is it all right for me to talk right now?
Uh, can you tell us what your, uh, sorry about?
I came to y'all about Vernon Johnson back in January seventeenth. Um, I was, the case between her and I has been dismissed as of October twenty-twenty-three. I'm asking for a refund of my cash bond, five hundred dollars plus the turnkey. And I was put in jail, fifty-one dollars. I dropped the copy off down there at Justice Court. I didn't see her, she's never available. I can't have no contact with her anyway because of what she did. I let the clerk know that I need to be refunded, but I'm asking, I don't know who, because ever since this happened, I've been running rat race. I've been told one thing and it's not true. I've been told another thing, it's not true. Who do I get my money back from?
I emailed our county clerk, Justice Court clerk about it, said that the judge signed the order dismissal on December the twentieth. And so, the reconciliations should be completed within thirty days and I'm gonna be released now.
Will we be mailing it to her or is she gonna be picking it up? Okay, we have a good address on you?
Yes, Vernon Johnson has eight Adams Lane, that just missed six.
Eight Adams Lane.
The secretary out there, give it to her. Okay. Also, I asked for the removal of discipline of Brian Alicia Johnson because she has abused her power. And she showed me how strong she's standing. But I would like to ask Brandy Lewis a question. Brandy Lewis, I never received a public, as they say, pub, I don't, I don't know if I was public or correct terminology. I'm gonna speak to you just like I'm gonna speak to you. I signed a document for public records, uh, January eleventh, twenty-twenty-two. The deputy, when I went to file charges against the deputy clerks that were working down at the Sheriff Department, I mean, not Sheriff Department, the Justice Court at the time, that threatened to do bodily harm to me on audio video. I never received that audio video request and I had a witness with me and I had a copy. You gave me a copy, you sweetheart. I never received it. But April tenth, through this long court process, April tenth, twenty-twenty-three, I had only audio as I informed the deputy. But he said, you can also get their request from the clerk. April tenth, twenty-twenty-three, Vernon Alicia put her hand in the air and bragged about how I didn't receive the audio video. And I quote, she said, I learned, Vernon Alicia Johnson, Justice Court clerk, told the court that Brandy Lewis and the Sheriff Department did not give Ms. Batista a copy of that audio video. So, in that moment, before she even said that, I turned to my attorney and I said, you remember when I said I had requested a copy of that video? And I never get, I got it, I never got a letter in the mail from what I found, I from the attorney general. I, all the public and terror. I asked, you know, they told me why. And I said, well, I did request it, but I never did get it. But Vernon bragged about it and said, well, they didn't give it to her, they, she gave it to me. They gave it to me, Brandy Lewis and Sheriff Department. I said, wow. Even though without her saying it, I was wondering like, why did she get it anyway? And I never got it. How could she get it and use it as evidence against me? But she did. So that alone was disturbing me. And she didn't call out IT brain. She didn't call out IT. She called out Brandy Lewis and Sheriff Department, quote unquote. These are not my words. She's a Vernon Alicia, and she said, this in front of her, the prosecutor? She said, this in front of the judge? She said, this in front of my witnesses, her witnesses, deputy clerks? Not only that, they slammed my name to the point that the judge was finna find me guilty amongst anything that side deal that they had by calling me a gangster and thug or whatever, riding through natural Adams County, can't do regular business because I'm a gangster slow rider through here, I guess, attacking the courthouses. They took mental notes of this. And this is their words that they testified on the stand against me. I asked for the removal of two other deputy clerks that attacked me on that video that had his deputy, Robert Moore, come and try to arrest me under the commands of Chrisella Thomas, not knowing that they were, just took one second to ask me what was going on. Or look at the video like Travis Pettit told it. Everybody looked at the video, I assume, that's what he said. Am I not right? Travis?
He was wrong. He was covering the.
Was it?
Well, you already have been through the court system and they dismissed the case or what's happening with?
I got a copy, you want, you want?
No, that's, that's all right.
Well, it's dismissed. It was, but they've been playing games for me. I never got the paperwork, they're supposed to release an offer.
I have an email here from January thirteenth of twenty-twenty-two. I sent the email address on the public records request. And it says, good morning, I'm the public record official of the county. We've processed your request and is ready to pick up. The, uh, for the time to recover the data and for the cost of the jump drive is twelve dollars and twenty-one cents. Please have your payment when you come to retrieve the drive. That was on January the thirteenth, twenty-twenty-two, at eleven twenty-eight AM.
Well, I never received it. I checked my spam, I, I don't know if you got the correct email. I know I signed paperwork. But I know Vernon Alicia Johnson made that clear that it was not gonna be given to me. And she, she made that clear in front of the judge. And not only that, she, she lied and said, I said, I was gonna beat a deputy clerk. That's the reason why she showed up. And the video showed that they were threatening to beat me. I filed charges on them. That deputy clerk's now a police officer.
All right, we, we can't do anything else about that. I mean, you didn't, you didn't pick up what you need to. They did have it available for you. I don't know why you didn't get it or, or didn't get the email.
Maybe then you said she, you said it was sent to the email, right?
Yes, ma'am, it was sent to the email address that was on the public records request.
Okay. Well, I never received, I guess, there's no, it's, it's neither there, it don't matter no more, right?
Right.
Okay. It don't matter. But why is Vernon Johnson?
You should be getting your money and to reconcile.
Why would Vernon Johnson still be working after doing, well, she lied on me. Is she still out to work in Adams County because of it? I'm just asking questions because I'm concerned.
We have complaints about employees. We, we, we check them out and, and they're, they're vetted and, you know, otherwise we wouldn't have any county employees. Because if, if we didn't vet them and, and make sure, if, if it's a valid claim and, and something was bad enough, yes, you, you know.
Bad, okay, well, I got put in jail.
We discipline them.
Behind a lot. And I'm, I'm so scared because I, like I told him, if I go outside, if I drop a pincer on the ground, that's how stupid that, that claim was getting. If I drop a pincer on the ground.
We probably have a closed termination later.
If I drop a pincer on the ground and Vernon Johnson see me or somebody don't like me, say, well, she was spinning through with it.
Okay.
And I'm gonna get arrested. So what, what's?
If you feel like you have a grievance, we, we could sometime go in a closed session and, and not air this in, uh, in public.
Okay, I can do that. When, when, when you think we can do that?
We'll be through about twelve, twelve-thirty probably. Uh, with, with the, uh, this meeting and we do close the terminations after the meeting.
At the end.
At the very end of the meeting before we close out.
She did a lot of bragging about what y'all did by throwing my daughter.
If we want to continue having this discussion, this is a personnel issue, we'd like to go into executive session. So if you'll have.
What I'm saying, the executive session, that's fine, I would like to do that.
Yes, ma'am.
But Vernon Alicia let me know that the executive session don't matter too.
I'm asking you to have a seat in this way?
No, I gotta go to work.
Okay.
I'll come back.
Okay, thank you.
I'll come back.
Next on the agenda is Fred Parker with an insurance update.
Good morning.
And we expect to have a few negative numbers.
Thank y'all for this.
All right.
Thank you.
The good news is that when we had a meeting a few months ago about samaritan.org, it's a company that can, uh, members of a group can apply to samaritan.org. And if they fit the model of being in samaritan.org, which is typically an ongoing, chronic, very severe disease. And then the employee decides that, that yes, they want to apply and they apply and all the, uh, everything comes together. Then this employee, Samaritan pays for them to have a medical plan that is not on this plan. And, uh, one, uh, member so far, there were several members that applied. Uh, one that, uh, was, uh, fit the model. And, but at the end of the day, she decided not to go with it. But we had one employee that, uh, claims have reached six, seven, eight hundred thousand dollars a year that did participate. And, uh, so that's some great news. Uh, so we'll see how that goes. Other than that, I think there are a couple of issues that I need to discuss that I can't discuss in public because of, uh, I would have to mention a name and the situation. And so, that would have to be done in the executive session.
Okay, you gonna wait around?
Oh, yes, yes, I'll, I'll, I'll be here.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, Freddie, thanks. All right, uh, any government business? City government, I'm sorry.
Well, uh, just a tad bit, I have not much. Uh, you know, we was in the process of Morgantown Road, uh, and it's still working. Scott is still applying Rileways. And we'll give the Jordan Lee come in to, uh, clarify so we can all get on one court. I think he was gonna be clarifying, he was making some minor adjustments. But then, I think in the state, they had got mixed up that they was redesigning, but it's not a redesign. It's only minor adjustments, I'm correct?
I thought it was gonna go back up.
Okay, well, we're gonna do it when he come up there. But that's the city government, that's how, we gonna move forward.
Okay, we, y'all discussed this with the city.
Yeah, we.
That's what you went to the meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. All right. Department reports, do we need to start with a four-year road plan or is, uh, Robert, are you gonna submit?
Yeah, I, yeah, I'm.
Yeah, you go ahead. That's top on the list.
Morning, board. Uh, before y'all, it's a four-year road plan, uh, been put together, uh, as far as asphalt, any conditions of the road, widening, striping, uh, we added, uh, some concrete roads, three roads added to the back. That was some, uh, concrete roads this year that needs some, uh, work done to them. But, uh, like I said, that is a four-year road plan. And you know, at any given time, we can add to this four-year road plan if we have to.
Is there anything particular on that we need to look at right off the top of your head?
No, I, I mean, I don't think it's, and like I said, um, some of the roads have been changed for redistricting. And, uh, I did do another separate sheet, uh, as far as what was updated on that. But like I said, it is, it near the right districts, uh, you know, as far as to what roads need, what's repaired. And, you know, far as striping asphalt, chip seal, uh, you know, the concrete roads, the three added. So, uh, it's, it's pretty much the same as every year, other than all of what we did last year. We removed all of the four-year road plan and added new ones.
Okay. Oh, you just gonna do your report while you're there?
Yes, sir.
No, no, no. I'm not in the right.
The boss is about to tell you.
We got to the next meeting.
Yeah, okay, we'll do it, we'll do that on the next meeting, but you can go ahead and do your report if you want.
Okay. Um, first thing I have, uh, President Wilson there up front with you is two small dirt requests. I put on. Yeah, I'll put everyone.
You have a motion to approve the application and adopt on the same.
Okay, it's four dirt requests?
Yes, the first one is four thirty Morgantown Road.
Four thirty Morgantown, okay. You wanna adopt both of them at the same time or you need it separate? Okay, the other one, one oh three G Lank Road?
Correct.
Got two small dirt requests, need a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the two small dirt requests.
I need a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Middleton.
Four thirteen Morgantown.
Four thirty Morgantown.
One thirty.
And one oh three G Lank. Take a vote. End of discussion. No discussion? How do y'all vote?
Aye.
Aye, it's had it. All right, what else you got?
Next thing I have is a letter of resignation from, uh, Matt. Next thing I have is a letter of resignation from uh Matthew Isipul.
Who is that?
Matthew Isipul, young fellow, been here about eight, six, seven, eight months, uh moving to Jackson. Uh his last day will be today, so uh I would like the board to accept his resignation.
Some of them.
Motion to accept the resignation?
You want to accept the resignation and advertise?
Yes, and advertise for his position.
Sounds like you're voting. Uh um.
All in all in favor? All in favor, move on.
Aye.
Aye.
Next thing I have, uh and I guess uh Mr. Ford will do it, or I can do it, is uh why don't we speed bumps? Uh we just need to get a motion, uh get the board to approve for the speed bumps. I know they went out and marked them and all, but um Paige couldn't find a motion where it was a motion.
Okay. We need a motion to uh put the speed bumps down at one one down the road?
Some more?
Moved by Mr. Gray?
Same.
Second on his suggestions?
We have this discussion. We have the seventy-five percent.
Yes, it's already everything been done. IMS has went and marked them all, and we were getting ready to do them, and Paige said she just didn't see a motion where a motion was made to do them. But all the paperwork was turned in.
All right.
Do you have any chance to have a copy of the signature page on that?
I'll find it. I'll have to. Like I said, we were missing.
I have one, 'cause we lost one.
Yes. Yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Motion carried.
Okay, the next thing I have is uh requesting fifteen hundred seventy-five dollars off our tire grant. It's a form up there for each side.
I got it, I can. Okay. All right. Need a vote, motion for the tire grant?
I make a motion to accept the fifteen thousand dollars uh by our Adam County grant.
Fifteen hundred seventy-five?
Seventy-five dollars.
Fifteen hundred seventy-five dollars.
All right. Need a second?
Same.
We have, oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Motion carried.
And uh y'all have the four-year road plan. The other booklet is a booklet that's showing the new redistricting uh roads that were changed.
It's ready.
Correct. And uh that's it. And then it's another form up there of some just directions to what roads they are and things like that. But it was uh moved on with uh us and um uh the guy that does the mapping. He's the guy. Anyhow, that's what the other booklet is showing, redistricting, what roads they are. That's all I have. Thank y'all for giving me another year.
All right. Hey, Robert, I'm gonna be with you. All sorts of stuff during my ride during the holidays. It's it's nothing major, just a few things that we definitely need to address. But I will tell you, like the gravel roads, like yesterday I was out at Tate Road, stuff like that. Soon as we get a little rain, we definitely need to go back over our gravel roads.
You gonna get that up late tonight?
Yeah, yeah. 'Cause I, you know, I just did a lot of riding through the holidays, there's a lot of washboards and stuff like that going another way. Two minor things. I'll be with you uh today.
All right.
Right before y'all worked off of the holidays, spoke to you about some debris in Lake Montra's. Jeff went out, picked it up.
Correct.
That afternoon, there was another pot. There's a there's a property owner out there who has rental property. And when someone moves out, they're just piling stuff up on the road. If it doesn't get picked up, they catch on fire by. Scott, I need to get with you and figure out what we can do moving forward, because we can't allow that to continue to happen. So I know y'all just came back on today, uh but if you will, get Jeff to ride out there and see. I'm sure it's been burned by now.
Yeah.
Uh but that's just on.
All right.
Um also, I talked to Meg and you a couple of weeks ago about window lane. Uh looking at the road registry, it's twenty-two tenths of a point two tenths of a mile. That is the counter. There was a request to have a um dump site cleaned up.
Right.
But the person who made the request, the property did not belong to them.
Right.
Well, they didn't let anybody know, so they're kind of wondering why it never happened. Well, they never filed, they never signed the request, and they never let anybody know they didn't own the property. So will you follow up with Meg and see?
We got the right landowner, two side, but I think we've already cleaned it up.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Department head report, if you can come.
Morning, boy.
Hey, how you doing?
I don't have, I really don't have much, but I just wanted you to update that we did. Um have a time inspection for the E W P that included Magnolia Bluff and Hightech Heights. So the contractor's gonna start addressing those. Um couple of punches item, it wasn't much, so they get those taken care of. And um I did submit the reimbursement for Magnolia Bluff, so whenever the president can sign them, it's already been approved for presidential signatures. So we get those signed, and I can turn those into N R N R C S. Um the striping on the project for SAP O one ten and the whole M, that's for Kingston Road, Lowell Woodville Road, and Auburn Road. Uh we got a meeting scheduled for the ninth at ten AM to do our our typical preliminary planning and inspection for the project. Uh don't expect many comments from it, so hopefully we can get that project ready to advertise sometime next month. And um this is all already done on my speed bump. And um that's pretty much all I have. Unless there are any questions for me?
I have a question.
Okay.
What about SAP O one seven, this paperwork? Does it need to be signed, or is this old?
O one seven, that was.
That's done?
That's prior to.
That's for you, okay.
I think we did eight, nine, and now we're doing two.
Okay.
So uh and that's what I was trying to get back on one call. We was talking about uh me and Mr. Dollar, uh I guess the time, my spread been there. And I was uh, and I think that's what I was wanting everybody to know, we was doing minor, we was doing minor modifications to the plan to try to make Morgantown uh move forward with it. We was not doing a total redesign of the project. And the city and the county got together uh uh that then, and you're still looking at that process right now?
Yes, we're making minor adjustments to it.
Minor adjustments. So, Robert, you have any questions or anything that you comment on that?
I I do, I want. On Morgantown Road, I I guess to clarify what me and you met out there and discussed and talked, it was like thirteen cross pipes throughout the project. We was trying to narrow them down to three, four, or whatever, maybe crossings. And then we were talking about putting con, you were talking about putting concrete outlets over the utilities to the back of the utilities to the ditch where the utility would have to be moved, is that? I I guess what I'm trying to say, me and Mr. Gaines have spoke about it a couple of times over the last few weeks, and I just want to clarify. I know that's what we discussed, but I I think he needs to hear of what we did discuss.
Well, one thing we discussed was currently the issue that we deal with utilities is you have crossings. So crossing crossing the existing utilities, which is calling those utilities to be relocated. And so we made minor adjustments to the plan to allow us to relocate those unit structures beyond or outside of the current location of utilities, that we won't have to relocate with utilities as much, you know. So we still gonna have like one or two crossings to get to the outfalls.
Yeah.
But we're trying to eliminate all of those crossings. I know while they were done, but we're gonna try to make some adjustments to uh minor adjustments to make sure that we can try to eliminate those as many conflicts as possible.
Gotcha. So there'll be a couple of minor changes to the plan.
Yeah.
They still have to get approved once you make them to M dot, but what we talked about supervisor Gaines?
Yeah.
Was M dot's aware of that, and they'll get right on it?
Yeah. So what I'm keeping it about speed was going on. That's how. All right, I thank you, uh Mr. Ford, I don't have any more questions.
All right, okay.
Give that back, boy.
Sir, in relation in relation to the documents, even though it's not my project, um I don't know if this is the final, I don't think this is the final. This is just the, I guess the project was accepted by state, so you have to have the board's approval as a acceptance of the project, so.
Is that Midjorica Road?
No, whatever SAP O one seven, it's not my project, I don't know.
You know, twenty-five.
Is it state park, that's state park?
Yeah.
That would be the, that document is, that document is seen that it has been set.
Well, I don't know if this has anything to do with you, if it's just Robbie and Scott just time. Uh Robin's late. We're, were we in litigation on that, or we're just gonna do it? And then?
No matter what, we have to do it in secret recovery. I was in a secret recovery all the hunk of other stuff, but.
How much more time do we have before the M dot or 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 the uh
M D U Q?
Comes down on us?
Uh they're, we're working with M D U Q, they understand the situation, so you know.
Okay, so we don't have a time limit right now?
They're not putting a time limit on it.
When they're gonna close roads, we don't do that.
They're not, they understand the situation.
That's used to sound like this, the uh Midjorica project, Midjorica and Red Central Road. Where they're off.
We need to have a motion.
Is Midjorica Road?
That is is complete, it's the asphalt, it's just a street. That's regular, do that.
Okay, so we need a motion to accept. Fine, this is Midjorica Road. State A project. Moved by Wes Middleton. Set set by Mr. Gaines. All right, we need a vote. Y'all vote on that?
Aye.
Motion carried. All right.
Anything else, any other questions? If I appreciate your time, I thank you guys for another year of serving as county agents.
Thank you.
Thank you. Departmental reports? Yes, ma'am, looks like you're next.
Good morning. Good morning. Twice, and apparently. Um on these number five, I had two quotes that were um for the health department. And we decided we would have come back and uh put a health department units, the units at the health department, six of them. We decided we were gonna revisit it back in um December for the to the beginning of the year. So I have the two quotes, um if you wanna go over them again to give you the prices on the units for the health department. Um Thor Sheat Metal is forty-three thousand five hundred dollars. It's to install three-ton condenser, one three-ton heater and coal, three five-ton heaters and coal, two four-ton heater and coal. Then six heaters, six filter racks, six thermostat, run gas to heaters and water heaters. And Majesty Heating and Co. was forty-seven thousand nine hundred fifty-three dollars.
For the same work?
Correct. Uh forty-three five with Thor and forty-seven nine fifty-three with Majesty Heating.
Wasn't there something about a boiler? Didn't we get a different job?
Yeah, that's what we're doing. The boiler's out. It was gonna be, how much was the boiler gonna be?
It was cheaper to do the unit.
Yeah, it was, I think he said about eight thousand or something, if I'm not, he didn't give me that, but he verbally told it to me. But it was gonna be cheaper to do this than to replace the boiler.
Sure. Okay.
All right, yeah, where does the money come from?
It's gonna come out of other contractual services, right? 'Cause we, the war money was put in.
I love to talk about it. We checked this budget, yeah.
Okay. So, okay, need a motion to uh accept the lowest bid?
I make a motion to accept uh all, which is all these, that's great.
All right.
Just mess a little dice.
Laws and bids.
Second. What, you can say second?
I said.
Angela.
Second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it. Low bidder, forty-three thousand five hundred.
And I'd like to thank you all for another year. It's been a purchase cover.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Good morning, boy. I just got a couple of things, couple of updates. I know we talked about the uh the long-term uh recovery committee. We're still uh asking uh these nonprofit organizations if they want to step up. We've had. We asked a couple already, a couple of them turned us down, but we're gonna still push forward this year. As like I said, that's one of the bottom things that we're only missing here in Adams County. Uh because as we said, you know, we're getting into a season when we get storms, uh possible ice storms, and a lot of people may not have insurance. So we're gonna try to get this up and running, uh hopefully by February. So that's my intent. At least have something in place by February, just in case we have any disasters here in the county. So I will update y'all on uh whoever accepts that, and I'll come back to the board to get approval on that. Also, on the debris removal, I know last time we talked about Green Tree, I tried to contact them to get a s- a statistic sheet references. We haven't received those. I think Denise hasn't received it. We emailed, called the guy, and he he hadn't sent us anything on that. Uh so I'm asking the board that we revisit that and remove them from it, because we hadn't got any information on it. They out of North Carolina. And I don't want to be stuck uh where they can't give me information like the other companies have. So I don't know what we can do, Scott, we.
We can, so this is a bid, and even if we accept the bids, we don't have to use them. It's just federal law allows us to use them. And so if you wanted to rebid those out, you could go ahead and do that. It wouldn't be an issue. Uh in a event happens and we just don't feel comfortable, Brad, using them, we just want to go do what we've done, but have, that's what I I would suggest is go on, go ahead and advertise.
Again?
And then put in the bid specs, they gotta provide this information, that kind of thing.
Yeah.
That'd be my suggestion.
You know, President, uh in the process of 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 doing all these bids, did we uh put a contact person down? Is it? Did they? Your contact person?
Yes.
And you can't get any contact with them?
Um, so I had spoke with them, 'cause he said he, at the last board meeting, he was appointed to go ahead and find out more about it, 'cause we had already been bid. But they're not giving us any feedback like all the other ones they put in. They're not giving what their expertise are.
I I'm saying this, uh it is me saying this. Whoever we get, we need to break it down where they can understand who the contact person is, who who's not the contact person. Because if somebody called me and your name is down for the contact person, even though he emergency management, I'm gonna deal with the contact person. Me, that's what I'm gonna do. So in the in the future, only thing I'm saying is, uh we might need two contact people. I don't know, because I'm not gonna communicate with somebody that's not the contact person. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, we we, I understand what you're saying, so but I was grateful. What we did is, I just asked for some more information to send to Denise. So she, they're on email. I see see them on email, what they need to send her, so I I put myself out. I was just asking them to send their requirement sheet, what their take buildings are before we go forward, because if they coming out of North Carolina for for five dollars, I don't want the county to be stuck with a bid.
I understand all that. I understand all that.
So, yeah, everything does go through Denise.
If if they won't do anything for us now, we don't have a disaster, we're really gonna have a problem, yeah, a problem. A big problem like that. So uh Mr. Slow, you think we just need to wait and rebid and?
You know, I don't feel I'm using them to help.
Uh we just can't pick up on the second, Lois?
Once you accept one bid, you reject the others.
Yeah.
Okay. So you need a motion to uh
Readvertise.
Readvertise for bids for?
Seven weeks.
Need a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Gaines, any discussions?
Give him this, President. Uh so are we gonna allow them to bid again?
The bid specs, the bid specs are gonna have in there the request and information that y'all are asking for.
Uh we gonna allow the same company, we just rejected to bid again on the same thing. That's all I'm saying.
Yes, they're only if they provide the information that that we requested.
But they still gonna be from North Carolina.
Yeah, Wes can make Lois and Beth bid, and we'll go and decide which is gonna be best on this case. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
That's all I have, board. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Brad.
I have my question. Um I just wanna know how do I handle this, 'cause I've already notified them that they are the ones that want it, so.
Do we need to send a letter or an email?
So I need to tell them they no longer are the.
I I'm gonna recommend you give me the legal. I, I would rather me and you give me the legal person over there and y'all can come up with whatever y'all need to come up with, just give it, Scott.
Okay, thank you.
Scott, she just needs to notify them that they were not gonna continue with their services?
We didn't find them all, because it was like an open contract until you give them the notice of, you know, yeah, worth, and they had no expectation of getting the contract anyway.
So, Mr. President, at this point, she don't need to do anything?
She didn't need to do anything, we're gonna get together and readvertise and keep on rocking.
Okay.
And if an event happens, we may, let's say if an ice storm happened,
When they see them.
We'd contact them and they're able to help. Still that option, you may not ever use them or whatever, so, no reason until we have another person.
Yes, because they requested a contract, but we never did get with them on that.
Okay, they don't have contract, okay, well, kind of settled that.
Okay, so I just did, thank you.
All right. Park mail reports?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I appreciate you doing another year, uh, as fire coordinator, and also share with the, with the. All I have is, like, we gonna work on rebuilding our volunteers, building them back up, and also, you know, working on new equipment for our trucks. That's what we're looking at. I know it's hard, but there's something we had to work, start working on. And that, that's all I have.
Do you have a grant writer?
Uh, we use.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, I know, Mike Ellis, does he work for Mr. Bradford?
Yeah, he's been off.
Oh. I know he's written a lot of grants, I mean, he's a, he's a good, good contact person.
The, uh, boys, like I said, the Southwest, they do all the grants, so I started working with, uh, with Netlist, she's been doing the grant boards and I think. We got a few grants that she wrote out of, right about three or four of them. And one time she got us, we the first one in the whole state, they got the, uh, I can't say his name right now, but we was all wanting to get two of them out of. So we gonna work on that, and then, like I said, this is something we gonna, we planning on doing, getting the volunteers back up and working on trucks.
Okay.
I'm gonna volunteer, so we have right now.
Uh, we have fifty on roster, before, like I said, boys out there, been in on probably about ten.
Does it add?
Yeah. And we gonna work on it, getting them, getting some more certified as level one also. All right, that's all I have.
Thank you, Eric. Chucky, are you hiding back there? You, you, you got a report?
I don't.
You don't, okay, I thought that's what you were hiding back there for.
Good morning, board.
How you doing this morning?
I've got one request here, and this is from AT&amp;T Mobility. They request a permit to place additional equipment on an American Tower LLC cell site located at three, quickly for own. Project will include placement of one thirty kilowatt Kohler diesel generator. And the placement of this generator will help ensure that the cell site provides uninterrupted service during power outages. Ordinance requirements have been met, and there are no fees required by the ordinance for generator placement. I request the board to approve this AT&amp;T Mobility permit application.
Okay, we need a motion to approve this permit for AT&amp;T? Led by Mr. Milton?
Same.
Seconded by Ms. Hutchins, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Morning, board.
Morning.
Uh, my name's Samuel Minor, and I wanna first thank you guys for, uh, giving me the opportunity to serve veterans in Adams County.
Yes, sir.
Uh, looking to great, for great things with, uh, improving the veteran service here in Adams. I know we have a lot of, of veterans that have lost faith in the VA, so we trying to reestablish those connection, mend them, and, uh, get on the road and, and do great things. I'm excited about this.
Well, we appreciate you for being the serve, that, that's a worthy call.
I appreciate it.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
Can't wait to see you some more.
Park mail report?
Just wanna say I'll be his first evening. Morning, board, how y'all doing?
Good morning.
Morning. First of all, I wanna congratulate all of you all on, on being reelected. You know, that's not an easy thing, even though people may look at it as something that, you know, that's more of a popularity, but it's not, you know. When you called to serve, you have an ultimate, a heck of a responsibility on your shoulders, and people chose us to do it. So, President Wilson, wanna congratulate you on becoming president, and wherever Supervisor Milton is at, wanna congratulate him as well.
Right, sure.
Also wanna say, um, you know, I had a chance to sit in on, on the interviews for the county administrator, and I don't think you all could've picked a better person than Ms. Washington. No, I'm not sucking up, Ms. Washington, I give credit what credit is due. That was one of the most impressive interviews that I had seen in a long time for a position like that, and I do appreciate you all, you know, allowing me to sit in on. I also wanna thank you for allowing Scott Slow to serve again. You know, people can say what they want, Scott, but I like it.
What have they been saying?
I ain't gonna say words on the street, but I like, I like Scott. You know, I'm gonna go and put that out there. He's always, he's always helped me when I needed him, so, uh, you know, you can't ask for more than that with communication. And I do, uh, I hope that, you know, starting this new year off, that we leave twenty twenty-three behind us and move forward on the, on the, on the same page, you know. We had a lot of missing pieces last year, and you all have done well, surviving those years and putting things in place moving forward, and I'm, I am very optimistic about the future. So hopefully we have our best year yet. Trash, let's go on here and get to trash. You know, the soup, the, um, holiday times is heck of a rush, cause just like y'all run skill and crews, we do too, and then everybody, it's been a lot of transition, so we've been helping a lot of people out, so unfortunately, uh, it's gonna be low this time, District Two Thirty-Seven, District Three Thirteen, District Four Forty-Nine, District Five Fifty-Three, that's a hundred fifty bags of trash they was able to pick up. Uh, District One, I don't have your numbers on here, but I know we did hit sixty-one south. Am I in the right one?
We. Share it out.
I know we did, because I got several texts about some areas down there, and we gonna make sure. And I do wanna say this about trash, though. Justice Danny Parker, he has, uh, told me face to face that he's gonna reinstate workers. And tell us a ton on trash, but my only issue that I'm gonna run into on that is having personnel to manage those groups. So that's just something to put out there, but we gonna try to figure it out the best we can, but he, he is gonna reinstate that, and just me riding around seeing the county, I know there's the supervisor gang, me and you talking. I didn't even see you videos of people out there picking up trash, showing that we all work in these areas when we can, and right now there are a lot of requests on us to help in the county with transitioning some of these offices and rodeo arenas and, and all this, so I'm, I'm stretching my people as far as I can, but I am looking forward to this work release program again, cause that was a huge, huge help, you know, with, uh, keeping our community clean. So I do plan on reaching out to M.D.O.T., seeing if they can spare one more.
I'm glad to know that's gonna be, cause that's something we asked for last time, is the judges to do a work release.
Yes.
Because if my neighborhood watch, that's what they wanted, remember, they talked about that.
They did.
And I'm, I'm glad to see that's gonna happen.
And another big thing that I hope you all get behind and support, and I'm gonna say this publicly, is this bill that's coming out. I don't have a bill number, but you know how in Louisiana they allow, uh, people who are incarcerated to actually do a work release from while being incarcerated? Mississippi is looking at that, and I know what people's thoughts are on it, but I think it's positive, myself, because when I go over there and I talk to the different people who are working, they let me know that, hey, I'm in trouble, but I'm able to pay it off and get things for my family and all that. And so Mississippi is looking at adopting that state work release bill for people who are incarcerated and doing time, so, hey, I'm for it. And I hope you all support it too when your legislature is calling.
I don't think we have any prob, problem picking any second chances, uh, and, and one thing people have to know, that it's not always gonna go perfect, though, but, but, yeah, people deserve a second chance.
Yeah, it's just about education, that people reading and think, oh, that's terrible, but it's a great program. It's not making people work, these are people choosing the work.
Choosing the work.
It's a good.
You know, and, and you talking about reintegrating people in society, what better way to do that than do it while they getting paid for it? So I know, I know people have mixed issue, mixed, mixed thoughts on that, but I'm for one, for, because I know how the young guys constantly who are over next door are looking for games, unemployment, when they walk out those doors. And I love, I'm not trying to go back to the street, so. I do have, uh, I do have two, two new hire requests that I'm coming forth on the board with, and I think, President Wilson, you should have these two, um, in front of you, give you a chance to get settled.
Okay, who you got?
Uh, the first one I'm gonna say is Otis Dyer.
Okay.
Hiring him part-time, at hourly rate of eighteen dollars an hour, annual eighteen thousand seven hundred twenty dollars.
Okay, I have it.
All right, and the second one is gonna be Clint Clark as a full-time deputy chair, hourly rate sixteen eighty-one, uh, annual thirty-four nine sixty-four eight, and this is within our budget.
Okay, I have it. All right. Need a motion for a hire, uh, Clint Clark and Otis Dyer?
So.
Second.
Second by Ms. Hutchins, any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. I, I was fit to, um, look over there and ask the county administrator, it's the money in the budget, but, um, I know she don't know, so, uh, the interim, it, it's the money in the budget.
I haven't reviewed these, but I, I will.
I think you're retired, you replaced retired, I replaced people that retired, yes.
And they should be.
It is signed off on, and we have, we have the H.R. and all that stuff. Mr. Neely?
Yeah, Neely is one of them, and, well, we not, we hadn't even gotten him yet, these are other folks that were retired, cause remember my lost friend Smith too as well.
Right.
And then I had other open slots that I hadn't had a chance to, yeah, so.
At the end of the day, we need to equip our county administration, uh, administrator with the proper equipment where she can be able to view all this at the bulletin, so is, is she gonna get a computer or whatever?
Yes. I think she'll be settled in by next board meeting, completely.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor? All right. Motion carries.
Speaking of, speaking of Chief Neely, he did retire, and, you know, after forty-four years, the state allows you to purchase your service weapon for twenty-five dollars. I have a check here and a letter requesting that he be able to purchase his service weapon for the twenty-five dollars. From the board, we need your permission.
So moved up.
Exact.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
No, carries.
Next is something that Ms. Brandon Lewis has already forwarded to the county administrator, so I don't wanna discredit what she don't know. This is, this is me requesting, uh, money to be moved in far as, as, as reference to the food budget. When we went through this and the budget got cut from three hundred fifty thousand to fifty thousand, I said again that it weren't accounted, not to you, I'm not saying you all that it wasn't being accounted for, but a crisis stabilization unit and a juvenile center. When we went back and looked at it, we paying about, it's not eight, it's actually about four, a little over four dollars and some per meal, which I did talk to Ms. Washington about, that we are gonna look at other means of getting food costs down. But that wasn't accounted for in the budget, so I'm asking for a twenty thousand dollar within my budget, uh, to be transferred from line item, uh, five eighty-one to six ninety-four to cover the cost, because that's a hundred meals a day that was not being accounted for, when it was cut from three hundred fifty thousand to fifty dollars. And this is within my budget.
The administrator looked at it, um, it granted.
That is within, within his budget, um, we're looking at the, the meals because there was a significant decrease from previous fiscal year. Um, we did talk to Mr. Lambert about it, and I think the reason for the cut was, of course, the inmates going across the river. But looking into, I think we're still trying to get some figures from juvenile detention as well as the CSU, um, to try and figure out exactly how many they were utilizing monthly.
And Mr. Lambert, actually, he only really accounted for about twenty, when we actually housing, closer to between thirty-five and forty.
Mr. President. Let me ask a question. So, in the past, were we, were we feeding?
Yes.
Did you have?
Always have.
So why isn't that for?
That was something that we were looking into, and I, I don't know if the figures, because like the sheriff was saying, I think that what he, what Chuck had budgeted for with the road to the sheriff's office was about twenty, and it sounds like that's about.
I think there was a question, is at the time, we were talking about it, about how much it would cost to feed them, and I think we never came up with a cost at that point. So that's probably why you see the increase, cause I, I guess the cost never came up.
So I'm gonna ask my question again, was we feeding them in the past?
Yes.
So we should already have that cost?
So he must've made mistake, he must've left them out, that's all I'm saying. That's what, that's what I said. He was saying, and I said again that you're not accounting for juvenile center and the crisis stabilization unit, and he said he still figured, he figured that this year should be enough, and I stood right here and said, no, it's not. And I said it right here, but regardless, the money is in the budget, and.
Okay. So we need a motion? Okay, motion, uh, Mr. Gaines. Hey, you got all that?
Is that gonna run over?
No more discussion.
When you're, the money, the line item you're taking it out of, is that gonna run over now that you're taking money out of it?
I hope not, but I'll let you know. I don't.
All in favor?
That's something we'll be sitting down with the county administrator to look over to as well, once you get settled.
Sheriff, what?
I'm looking forward to it.
The CSU, when they sent a check to the sheriff's office?
Uh, they told us, well, in the past.
They sent it back?
Yeah, to you. And we never did get the contract in place again, so we need to, you know, they've been trying to get a contract in place again, and we need to really get that done, so.
They don't send me all money, they send it back to twenty.
Twenty thousand, twenty thousand, okay. I find out for sure today, uh, where they mailed it to again.
He thought that they were sending it to y'all, cause he could never find the money.
The only one they mailed to us was for the cooks. You know, that's, that's the one they mailed to us.
From the CSU.
Is that something that could've went in general fund and?
Should, well, be very.
If we got it, it's on.
One, too, they should have booked it either way.
Right, and, and that's why I say I can have Jackie check on it, Brandon, I can have Jackie check on it, cause we make a copy of every check.
Right.
Before we take it across the street to, to accounting and, and deposit, we make a copy of every check that we receive.
Yeah, and that was one of their questions, was just to make sure during that transition that y'all were still getting your payments for those from the CSU.
Yeah, I'll find out today for you.
Thank you, Jerry.
Yeah.
Cause it is a, it is a new, we are dealing with a new, dealing with region fifteen now versus who we were dealing with.
In his, in his email, he said he budgeted for juvenile, fifteen prisoners. But he did not include the CSU.
All right.
You think I got it?
Yes.
I'm doing it, boy.
There was never any, man. Uh, I just wanna bring up to the board, I know you all decided to not go back with Enterprise. I want to just bring it to your attention that those, I think it was maybe eleven cars, maybe, I could be a little off on the numbers, but, how many? Nine cars. Nine cars are scheduled to come off in October, am I right? In October, and so we're gonna, the board is gonna have to make a decision what you gonna do, cause remember those releases.
We made a decision.
Do you make a decision?
We haven't, the last time we purchased vehicles, we did through lease purchase.
We did, but remember I kept coming in here and, and saying that this is the year we gonna come back and get your big lump, but we, y'all voted on
Yeah, we.
Not dealing with the Enterprise anymore, and so we just kinda left.
We voted on that?
Ain't that?
Yeah, you did.
Yeah, we bought the last, cause they.
I kept seeing that. And, and y'all said y'all wasn't gonna go back with him. I wish you would go back with him, because this is the year where we really would've got our equity, but.
Well, the, the county administrator can look into that, um, and, and see what's gonna be the most favorable way to do that.
We're still, we're leasing, those that we lease, we should be able to sell and realize the equity on them.
We don't wanna sell them if we not gonna be getting more cars this year though, so we don't wanna sell them, we don't wanna lose them either, because.
But you don't have to have Enterprise to do what you're proposing, you just have to get yourself on a budgeted schedule of selling your vehicles when you realize the most income. Basically cut out the middleman by doing that.
Well, you know what's happened last couple of years, so, I mean.
We need to stick to a budget, or stick to a plan.
I agree, I'm not, I'm not in disagreement with that, I just know the equity you all say need go to general funds that was gonna come this year, because I, I guess it was a lot going on, but if we gonna go to the budget, let's go to the budget, but Enterprise, it would have, it would have been our favor if we would have kept them this year.
Well, and that, you mean to continue the lease on the cars we have, or to?
Continue purchasing through new cars. Because I think they was making what, five thousand dollars from us on whatever.
They're making ten thousand dollars.
Something like that. Per cycle.
For something that we can do ourselves.
But we say we're gonna do it, but the last couple of years, we had to purchase vehicles out of, uh, state contract because we weren't doing it.
So, well, the reason for that was you couldn't find a mistake contract, because of COVID, nobody even had a vehicle for the most part.
Oh, that was part of, the other reason was when we kept bringing it up, it was getting shut down and got kicked down the road. I'm not blaming you all, but we had a different kind of administrator.
That's only because we didn't have any money.
Whatever the reasons, I'm still, it still happened though, you see what I'm saying?
We will get it, we'll, we'll, we'll work on it, it's, there's, not, not a decision that has to be made today.
No, it doesn't, but I just wanted to bring it up, because, you know, they gonna ask, and I wanna make sure that everybody knows.
We'll be better informed in two weeks.
I think, but like the sheriff says, a good idea, we just need to stick to the plan, and you don't need Enterprise to do it. And ten thousand doesn't sound like that much, but.
But it is.
I mean, it's.
When you're talking about per car.
Well, you gotta look though, you just listened to that one part of it, but the way Enterprise had it set up, and we could do it, if, if it's gonna be done and done in a time of merit. But the way they had it set it up, is they had it, they had that stuff down to the science, where when you sell these vehicles, you're gonna give optimal pricing, which in return will purchase the new stuff for you, and your maintenance cost was lower, but we, we ain't gotta do all that, but I'm just saying though, timing matters, because when you purchase out of state contract, we had everybody's mercy, of whatever they wanna sell you, sell you vehicles for. And that's one thing that I've asked for us not to do, because it costs so much more, it already costs a lot for a shared vehicle as it is. But when you do it out of contract, you, you, you at your mercy.
We're just one year on it, this contract? How, how long we?
He said we're on our third year, and I think that's right.
Is it third?
Yeah, I think it, we on our third year, and that, that's when, that's when you was gonna really see what you gonna be able to put towards the equity port, equity portion. My concern is, is that I don't want us to get caught not paying attention to this, and then October come and you have to find some money, because it's not budgeted anywhere, or what you gonna do with whatever the difference is in the lease versus actually going ahead and finishing the purchase of these vehicles, and then nine cars gets snatched from us, that's what I'm concerned with.
The other problem is the refit, I mean, was it twenty-five thousand dollars to?
I don't know. I don't know, it does cost. Right, and that's why I say you don't, they already set up, you don't wanna lose that, I just wanted to bring it to the board's attention. So that it can be the topic of discussion, and a plan can be made moving forward towards October. Because I know we've already been told that no cars this year because of budget restraints, and I get it, but I don't wanna lose nine either. Yeah, don't wanna lose nine either.
Sheriff, I did review, and you were on track on that budget, so there's, there's two highlights of it.
Okay, you don't wanna ask me right now, do you?
About what?
Anything. Okay, I just checked.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm good, I'm ready to get done.
All right, I just have two more things, uh, that I'll be done. And for the record, I did, this is another thing I wanna know, I heard the, the complaint come in here this morning. I just want you all to know that I do not control the videos in justice court, that is controlled by county I T, so I can't issue anything from justice court, when we need video from over there, we had to ask for it and go through the proper channels, and we do. So I don't want anybody to think that, that we're, because when people put it out there blanket that the sheriff's department, that's not the case. Because I actually had spoke to that young lady for an hour on the thirty about this very same issue, and told her the challenge that she need to go through. When all the accusations were thrown out of way, they didn't do it, and we didn't do it, but I just want y'all to know that, that goes through county I T for the video over there and justice support from not us. Last thing I would suggest, I wanted to bring up is, is not now, but in the future, I hope that the county will consider setting aside some money, match funds for grants in the future, if we couldn't match on, on some little thing, maybe we can set aside a little money for grant matches in the future, because there's a lot of funding out there that can be got, gotten. Put more, more than likely we gonna have a match to do with it, so that's all I have, y'all have anything for me?
Thank you.
All right. Sheriff, has anybody been out on, um, Hudson Land Road picking up trash?
We have been somewhere everywhere, but I can't say within the last week or so of seeing it.
Well, I got a text the other day, and, and a little bit of video where the, the trash companies picking up trash on a flatbed. And then they're picking off, going down the road, and all the trash is blowing off.
Well, if they have it, we can send them.
So there's probably a pretty good mess out there.
It's, it's a pretty good mess in a couple places, that's why I'm happy about the work release, because I'm telling you all, like this, between COVID and people being on vacation, I've only been able to run one and maybe a half crews.
Yeah, I understand.
During this, this whole year, but.
I just remember that I got that call and, and text about that and a little video, so. After Christmas, it's really bad everywhere.
Because I've been riding, I rode down Redwood Road, and from one end of Redwood Road to the other one is loaded with trash, so as soon as my guys finished moving the new D A in and helping him over there and some other folk.
I was.
We'll get them, we'll get them all back out in the spring.
I wanted to ask you about that, because I got the privilege of walking through there, and.
I know.
You're gonna, you're gonna help out with that, because that is the biggest mess I've seen in the whole.
We helping out with it right now as we speak, and, but, but see, when we do that kind of stuff, it pulls our crews off the streets. And so that's why I want y'all to know, if your number's low, is because we helping in other places in the county, we doing our part, just like we asked to do. You know, if I had to pull him off the road to fix this, to go to the ball park to, to help him, I, I do do that, because I realize, you know, we, we gonna have to work as a team to get stuff done this year, because we all working a little short.
Well, I know they appreciate you coming over there and helping with that, because I, like I said, it's a pretty good mess over there, and they, they, there's a lot they need to do.
Part of the, that American program that Fred was talking about, sheriff was real important about getting that into the program. He helped us communicate that to the employees, and that should be a good savings for us, so.
I was glad they presented, and I wish we could have got a couple more in there, but.
You and me would have been great, but we didn't call, honestly.
Yeah, well, the last thing I'm gonna do is I'm gonna get this to the county administrator, because I do want her to be up to speed. You all have already gotten a copy of this, these are some of the issues that we have in the jail that hadn't been fixed. And I don't want her to come in on the back end of things, I want her to know, you know, some of the things that's going on, so this is just for the county administrator. You already have these, I need y'all to copy it in the morning, but I won't give it to you. That's all I have, congratulate Maudon, winning this list. Thank you all, board.
Departmental reports?
Good morning.
Hey, how you doing, Zach?
Good, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
We remorsefully and respectfully acknowledge our support to the board and their search for a replacement for the board committee at the board due to the loss. One of our commissioners last year, we are as patient as we need to be. We urge you to take your time, we still have four members, we still constitute four.
That's, that's Mr. Middleton's, uh. And I'm sure that he's, he's already.
We survived twenty-three. We did well, we did a lot of things. The commission request replacement on the, in the, at the next meeting this month. So that they can acknowledge all of the information they wish to transfer to the board. We, um, once again, we'll be applying for some funds through the State Department, Department of Transportation. That only requires a one percent match, in an effort to complete the new side click load, which Phase One is done. We're gonna try and find some more funds to proceed with Phase Two, if the funds are available to complete it. If not, Phase Three in the future, get Phase Two done, and then subsequently Phase One. We, Ms. Clerk, in case the C B A did not send you a final budget. I have a copy.
Okay, yes, I am obviously, we won from them yet, so thank you.
You will like, I also have an envelope for bookkeeping.
We can get that to him.
All right, very good.
It's a big check.
It's in the envelope. I don't, I don't have any other information.
That's all you have for us?
That's all.
Anybody got any questions?
Uh, no, crazy, and I don't have any questions, but, um, I know you talk about the state, Doug, is, is anything you need on the federal level? Because if it is, you need to get a package together, so when we get ready to go, we can talk to our people.
Well, we already have two apps filed, uh, one of, of course, requires a match. And it's still there, it's still on file. If the board says match, then we'll renew those two apps.
Could you kind of, since, I don't know who else going, I know me and supervisor Hutch is going, could you kind of send something where bring us up to speed on what you're talking about?
We will send.
Yes.
An acknowledgement, uh, for those two grants, and they both pertaining to rehabbing the railroad uh, down at the port, the tracks. That was, that was an item that was pretty urgent regarding rail movement, uh, that necessitated, encouraged the application, the federal government was appropriating some money, uh, one of our comrades, sort of, uh, got eight point five million out of the fund. We didn't have the match capacity. The app has not been trashed. But if we're gonna chase it down, proceed with it, we have to keep in mind a match that we'll have to make if we are, but we will get you that information out. So that when we're to be seen, you'll have something to put in front of it.
Thank you.
It'd be good to have that, thank you. Okay, any more departmental reports?
I, I mean, I've got, uh, something that we, for executive session, two items that are discussing the lease and sale of, uh, property at the International Paper, former International Paper site. And then I just got, I don't know, is, is it part of business on the approval of, of the to get signatures for the doug, W N on those, on the bond. For the improvements, I know it's sensitive stuff, but I don't.
We got that this morning, the contract documents or whatever for the cleanup. The I P, is that correct?
Right, should have gotten the bond, you should have gotten the, uh, proof of insurance, and should have got the contract. And then something else, I think, is in that package.
You come up with six seventy-five?
Yeah. And nevertheless, we're using the two fifty from, which we transferred to Brandy. Basically, you got the two fifty in an R above, two fifty from N B A, and then another hundred and fifty out of the, the, the third, uh, the one point nine that N B A gave us also, that, you know, to pool all that money together for that project. But is the sheriff still there, it's a, the only other thing I, with, with that, uh, sheriff on the, so that, um, that sixty, seventy acres that the county's fixing to authorize for cleanup is.
She's about to say, Jeff.
I, I'm saying you got some, you got some, some cars out there.
Oh, yeah.
You got some, some cars out there that got to either be, I don't know what you wanna do with them, because they, they're basically fixing to have some bulldozers and some other, some other stuff with, uh, some of them are seized cars, some of them are wrecked units and stuff that are out there, but there are two spots, that, that basically by the, over the other area, and then up by the, uh, up by your, the office area, and.
Get with the sheriff, and, no, I'm sure y'all can figure it out.
We're bringing it through a street. I was just missing with Jeff, huh? We'll work it out.
They gotta go somewhere, o- otherwise he's gonna dig a hole, stick him in it, but I'm just, but, uh, so, uh.
We're gonna have to do a proof pending legal approval.
What, what is it?
This is the I P cleanup that Chandler was talking about?
So it's just a cleanup?
West Milton, second round, Mr. Warren Gaines. Any discussion? You got a amount for the cleanup, and?
The total amount, six seventy-five, which is, which is what they bid, uh, it, it, it basically was, you had six, seven bids that were open probably, uh, three, four months ago.
Three months ago.
And y'all took them under advisement.
Yes.
Remember, we only had a half, half million dollars allocated for it, we hunted around and pulled the rest of the money together and, and then y'all awarded the bids, they went back. The engineers been pulling together the bond information, and that's basically, they're about, they just need the contract, and it's ready to move forward, so. It's basically just.
So we're approving the contract that we already agreed to?
Yes, sir.
All in favor? Any opposed?
Yeah, and all other business we got is the, the two items and, and, and closed, closed session, so.
Yes, I'm in.
Can I ask something, I'm the chancellor here, on the railroad, we went out and done that cleanup from the Russell to the rubber plant, and we had the work done, and we done our part as a match. Where are we at? I, I know at one time, they said it didn't meet specs or
Yeah.
what they wanted, so what do we need to do to get that, and I think that would be a big plus to.
Two things, they, they did a, they, on the levy dollars, uh, they did do uh, on the levy grant for Bellwood. Part of it was, uh, we had some monies allocated for solving the engineering, uh, errors that were, that occurred, or possibly occurred, I don't know who to talk to, but anyway, uh, and, and so the, the specs that came back, they were way high, I mean, and they, they, they bid it as an addendum on the last bid cycle for the deal, like, and so the county threw them all out, meaning they didn't, they were too high. Wasn't anything that, uh, was, was able to do. So, um, and so I believe the, uh, the plan is, is, uh, is one of the, and, and they bid it wrong, I'm, I'm just telling you, the, the, all of the folks that, uh, they dug did too much, meaning they had some tie work in there and some other things, and that was not what it was intended to do, and so, uh, I think you'll see when we rebid. And so, uh, I think you'll see when we rebid the, the levy project that came in a little high, uh, then we'll rebid that piece out as well, but, uh, so, they, uh. Yeah, you've got National Railway saying that they can't get an engine through there, then you've got two engineers now saying that there's nothing wrong with it, that they should be able to get through there. And so, what we're doing is gonna, we gotta clean the track back up, get it, uh, get it passable with.
That's reason I ask, because at one time I heard it was about a sixty thousand dollar repair that needed to be, get it up to standards, and then we needed to go back and.
We've got.
Re-clean it.
We've got eighty thousand dollars in the budget of the, of the one point nine, it's like one point nine seven is what, uh, one point nine nine seventy thousand. Eighty of that is dedicated towards cleaning up and repairing whatever issues, uh, are, are appropriate there. And that's all the money they have, Louis Beard came in, when they did it last time, it was like four hundred and something thousand dollars. I mean, they, like I said, they, they bid the, the wrong stuff out, but, um, so, we're amending that, correcting that, and gotta rebid, bid that portion of it. But it will be, it will be handled as well, Kelly, it's just gonna take a little more time.
Chandler, before you sit down, just, I want to make you clear on what I'm hearing. You talking about the cars outside of the, the barn down there, or you talking about the one on the slab?
Both. So that whole, the whole area, everything left of the, when you come into the guardhouse.
You talking about the rumbles of the, the big piles of debris, you talking about blessing of new country?
Both. So everywhere, so when you come into the, to the guardhouse.
Chandler, y'all, y'all worked that out.
Hey, okay, good, I'll work it out.
Oh. Roger, call the next one, you, you got three people that you needed hourly rate to change this for?
Yeah.
Because they were being on job for six months.
Yeah, but I was, they were in the interview.
Okay, okay, they, they were here and I wanted to see. Okay. Okay, uh, next departmental report. Yeah.
Sure, all right, why not? I thought Scott would be in here.
He's right behind me.
Um, he asked me to come on over here, he's got this professional services agreement, this is for the Adams County Home Project.
Okay.
And this is for, uh, the asbestos and lead inspections. And I, I think Scott has approved it, here it comes.
These, these are the twenty thousand dollars?
No, 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 this is, uh, this is the home grant we got back in two thousand twenty-one.
Okay.
That's still, uh, we're still working on. So there's, there's four homes, there were five, five homes initially, one dropped out, there's four homes, um, so this is for the asbestos and lead-based paint inspections.
Okay, well, I mean, you need to work, Scott, come here.
That's fine.
Uh, Modi, did you have something?
No, I just, yes, sir.
Okay. Congratulations again, uh, Modi on coming, John.
Thank you.
He's just out there, he needs to sit down.
I don't know if anybody else has a report.
Oh, all right. Well, wait, while he's in there, I'll address something else on the same project. The other issue I've been having is finding someone to do the surveys, because the grant, the grant only allows for eight hundred dollars for a survey, and there's not an engineer. I, I didn't, the last, no, I have not, uh, I got a quote from, from George, I'm hoping he's still here, from I M S, and he quoted me, uh, two thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars per home, so only three homes need a survey. So, we are with the budget, so I, I can contact that guy?
I'll send him, I'll send you.
Okay, all right, all right, we'll do that then, I can address that the next meeting.
Okay.
Oh, Chris Scott, all right, professional services agreement for the asbestos inspection.
Is this for the? Hat home grant?
It's for the home grant, right.
And part of the grant you have to go and inspect all your properties, asbestos.
That's right, so last time I came, uh, this company had quoted like seven hundred and fifty dollars, it's four hundred dollars, uh, let's see. The grant only allows for four hundred dollars, she came down to five hundred, y'all asked me to go back to her and talk to her, and she came down to five hundred and said going forward in two thousand twenty-four, it's gonna be seven fifty, so I can work with that, it's only a hundred dollar difference. There's room in the budget, I can work with that, I'm not too, too concerned about that, so I, I think we're okay with going ahead and going with this company. Long as Scott approves the contract she submitted, and she's already signed it. And then I'll address the survey at the next meeting.
Do you need motion, hey, wait, I'm Scott, let me give that.
I, I, I'll make the motion to approve the contact, uh, pending on legal review.
Perfect. All right, I need a second. Second one, easy question. Any discussion? Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank y'all.
You gonna do your legal review, you, you didn't do it right then, didn't you just?
Uh, no, we were gonna talk about the, uh. Yeah, the kind of SNAP-like grant that we did, appropriation from the county. I met with Alan, Work, and Lynette, it was probably what, December fifteenth, eighteen, around that time, and they had some comments back, uh, most of them made, you know, sense to me, so I added those comments, I emailed it back over to the board. Uh, one of the things that they had asked for was for a home inspector, what they do with the home grant is there's an inspector that makes sure that the work is done, that's done right and so forth, and it's actually put on site. Uh, that's something that they suggested that we do. Uh, home grant, they have an inspector, isn't that correct?
Right.
That like statewide person that comes and does it, we don't obviously have a in-house home inspector, um, so that's something that we would have to, uh, include in our, in our project. I asked Robbie about it, that are home inspectors that are local that we could probably get to do, I don't know, what do you think they run?
I, I don't know, I can find out, like, if you don't want people to purchase houses, sometimes they request a home inspector, you don't want people to do that, so I think there's, you know, there's, but I can trust this guy and, and with the case.
Mr. President.
Is there something we wanted to add? I mean, I think it makes a lot of sense.
That's your question. Who inspect them right now for the SNAP grant?
It's a statewide person, so that was.
With a SNAP, I'm unclear, when that's our SNAP person? With home grant, they, uh.
I'm talking about SNAP grant, who inspect the SNAP grant that, that we already doing right now?
I don't know specifically who it is, I'll have to ask Lynette and get back with you on that. But she does have somebody to inspect something. So, because we're not qualified to do it.
So, when we think that that same person be qualified to inspect the same thing that we trying to do, SNAP grant?
Uh, possibly.
Hey, man, I'm gonna say this, man. Uh, this is a very simple. Deal that we trying to get done through Southwest Plan, y'all making it real, real complicated. Y'all trying to find ways not to do something, it's, it's, it's real simple. The guidelines are already in place, the only thing we doing is, is giving the money to some people that really need the money to be able to fix their house. We, we already doing that with the SNAP grant, so I, I don't understand why this is so complicated.
If the, Lynette uses their inspector or whatever, y'all been issued with using the same inspector and having to pay him for, for one of them.
Well, we gotta do whatever, we gotta do it, we gotta compensate them, we will, but we don't need to reinvent the wheel when we already got somebody, already inspecting.
Yeah, well, that's what they're saying, they, they suggested, they said that that's what they do for their projects, so it makes sense.
Well, we're gonna end up spending another five, six hundred dollars on that, aren't we, just to do that, that we could be using to fix the homes with. Um, the bottom line, we're just asking for people to, what's wrong with your house, this is what we're gonna fix, we're not gonna fix the whole house, we're just gonna fix whatever part of it needs repairing.
It, it, we gotta have.
Floor's falling in the bathroom, or, you know, or a roof leaking?
Let, let me, let me say this, even if there's ten thousand dollars on that per house, you could take this, the inspection fee out of that.
Is that what y'all wanna do?
Yes, I mean, you have to pay any difference, use the amount in there that you fixing at home to take the inspection fee out of.
Certainly we can do that, and that was the direction I asked for the board, y'all wanna take it out or you wanted it added?
I, I don't know why we need an inspection other than we figure out what we're gonna fix, and we fix it, because the rest of the house doesn't really concern us.
No, you're not doing a whole, you're just making sure that the work, that the, A, they work, need the work, they come out there and they do it, and it's done in a good, working line, voila. So, for instance, a wheelchair, go out there, make sure they need a wheelchair. Wheelchair, wheelchair ramps installed, they go out there and make sure that was installed correctly, and that's, that's it. If it's a new roof, they did new, well, here's the roof, here's the issue they need, okay, make sure that it was installed correctly.
Just, just take it out, I do, just.
Well, I just, I just wonder if you couldn't get a local contractor, just, if you give their time to, you know, inspect something. Because we're dealing something, because we're dealing something for, uh.
They already know, right?
Oh.
They should already know.
Karen, they already done, with the, with the SNAP grant that, that they already have, don't they inspect them?
I believe so, Lynette's our SNAP.
So, so all the money that the SNAP grant is, is already built into the SNAP grant. They just take it out of there?
That makes sense.
I mean, you been talking about this how many months?
No, like, not months, a year. A year. A month. It's that old, a year.
So if y'all are good with that, we have approved it and sent it back to them, we should be.
Okay.
The next, the next question, in there, in contract. We do pick the two people, they do not.
That was the other suggestion that they had, you do it on a first come, first served basis.
They can't tell us how to spend our money, Karen.
That's right, this is our money, we decided how we just gonna spend it.
We already discussed, decide this as a board to make it fair for everybody on this board, to make sure that everybody on this board gets at least two people that they can help in their district. If they do it the way they do it, everybody come from my district, that ain't gonna be fair.
Well, I'll ask for a meeting, uh, with Works and. Two Senator Rogers and all, you know, hash it out.
Well, maybe we can get the money out of some of that money we giving them, maybe we can take it out of there. It might be a good way to do it.
Okay, we need. Okay, we need to do anything right now, Mrs. Slover?
Yeah, we're waiting for it.
Okay, all right, anything else, huh?
Not so.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
All right. Any more departmental reports? I don't believe there is. Um, public comment? Yes, sir.
May I share with the, uh?
You got, you got a podium, few speak, I'll read. Name the address when you get there.
Philip Stokes, thirty-one, fellow West Rose.
Philip Stokes?
Yes, National, Mississippi.
Okay.
Located in the Adams County area, uh, I presented to the board to wake up the increase of the, uh, trash, uh, payment. And I found out that, uh, over a period of decades, I had been paying for garbage feed that I really didn't owe. And I, I took a look at it closely, because I paid attention as the amount went up. And I was aggrieved as well as the older people that sat here before me, and I discovered that the money I paid out. Happened to be a debt that I didn't owe. And I'm asking the board to reimburse me concerning the fees that I have paid out.
Okay, you were talking, you were being charged for two garbage pills over the last?
Yes, and it was not a household.
And you didn't know that, it, um, when was the last time somebody lived in that house?
Nobody lived there, yeah.
Ever?
It's never been lived there.
Okay, but you have order turned on to it or nothing?
The, uh, sanitation department was, that was the first thing they checked into. The, uh, characteristic of the situation that rendered it my fate, I heard a lot of wisdom going here at this table concerning the board here today, and I was so impressed. Point that my presentation today is that I wanna be compensated as well as the way that you talking about how you handling your business.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Um, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Stokes, you got a house right here, and you got a dwelling on the same piece of property. And that you are getting charged for, for, for sanitation where you live.
The household.
And you saying this dwelling right here, nobody been living there.
It's not a household.
It's not a household, but you being charged.
I'm being charged.
You being charged.
The law states there, it has to be a household.
Mr. Stokes, let me finish, now, so.
Close.
So, Mr. Attorney, is it anything legally in our power that we can do to, to compensate him for being charged? For something that they haven't been picking up garbage for, never?
If his, and I believe that the questions are correct, that he's not, uh, the generation, if the, if the property is not a generator of trash or rubbish, just something you find, and generate, so it's a honeycomb, for instance, that's a generation of trash, rubbish, they get charged. Yes, if it's an erroneous payment to the county, you can refund, but not for ten years, we can go as far back as three years, that's the, once the statute of limitations has run, then you can, you can, for, for an erroneous payment, you can't get past that.
With that having been said, knowing that this has been three decades, I was just asking the board for its pleasure to contribute the credit to the existing property. So I won't lose the benefit in this totality.
Mr. Stokes, uh, I'm just one supervisor, and I've been knowing you all my life, and, uh, I'm gonna take the recommendation of legal counsel. If legal counsel say we can do it, that's all we gonna do, if legal counsel say we can't do it, then I'm not gonna do it. Me, I'm just saying me, we gotta throw other people up here, but if that man right there that represents us to keep us out of trouble, give us his expertise and tell us what we can and can't do, that's all I'm willing to do. And if he say we can go back three years, that's all I'm gonna do.
Okay, with the three years, I'm just adding addition to that. You talking about three decades, give me some credit to the existing household to where I won't have to pay none this year.
With the three years that you got coming to you, adding to?
Yeah, give me some credit, with the pleasure of the board, I won't have to pay no garbage fee the rest of this year, I picked it up from there, and we playing ball right now.
I mean.
Mr. President, oh, oh, let me finish, Mr. President, hold on, Mr. Stokes, so what you saying, that with the three years of money that you made it, you want that to go towards?
No. In addition to that, the rest of this year, I will not be charged no garbage fee, according to the household that is six, the one that is six.
He's saying three years plus another year of additional, we can't do that.
Credit, you can't do that?
He's saying been charged thirty years for.
Yeah, well. It was three decades, but you willing to give me?
The problem is, and then I'm not gonna say it's, it's the legal term for this, but you should have recognized that a long time ago, so statute of limitations is three years, so they're gonna back up and give you back your three years, if that's what they, they look at and they decide to do. They can give you a credit, or I, I guess they can write you a check for, for it, but you still have to pay the thirty-five dollars. Unless you want it to be a credit towards your garbage bill for, if it turn out to be three, uh, uh, you know, a year and a half, two years, you don't have to pay a garbage bill.
In all respect.
But we can't give you anything more than what's, what the, what the statute of. But we can't give you anything more than what's, what the, what the statute of limitations.
Well, exactly, I mean, a closed mouth can't get big. But it was, if not, Rob, it's the same thing.
What I'll do, I'll, even though I feel like I know the answer pretty well, I'll ask the Attorney General's office, I'll send a request in writing, whether they give us permission to do it, and if they do, then we'll certainly, I think it would be the pleasure for him to speak.
It'll be the right thing to do.
And I think it would be the, and that's not about a right or wrong, wrong thing, I know you this, but legally, no matter how good a claim is, if a certain period of time is run, it becomes too late, even if it's the best claim in the world, and they call that a statute.
Oh, I understand.
Yes, sir.
Uh, that's all I have.
Thank you.
And, uh, what, what, I mean, who I'm supposed to get with, I mean, as far as the decision on the three-year situation?
Mr. Slover's gonna handle that, what, and, uh?
Check back in the first meeting in February.
Okay.
By then, we probably have a Attorney General opinion, I'm, I guess, I don't know, they so slow.
We waiting on two of them already.
But in the meantime, you got it straight with the sanitation department, and they're only gonna send you one bill? For that property?
That's, that's, that's.
So, they, they have, they don't bill you no more for that?
She check with the water company, and that's all she needed to know.
All right. Thank you. Any more public comments? All right, um. I was wondering what that's going on, so here?
You just, Dave? You could answer any questions if there were.
Okay, I think we do need a, get a report from you, if you don't mind, just tell us what, what is going on, how things are going, and?
Uh, yes, so.
Your Jay?
Jake Amber, sorry, computer consultant, I'll say here, not just. Um, when, uh, we agreed with the board to help y'all out with the IT issues that were pending, uh, as of last week, I believe, we had about a hundred requests that were pending. Um, we closed out those hundred requests within the first week, week worked, and then since then, we've been basically handling the county's, uh, tickets that have come out since then, um. Haven't had any, any complaints, and, and so far, everything seems to be working smoothly. There's a couple of things that, um, probably need to be addressed, uh, uh, technology wise, as far as, um, the age of some of the computers in some of the departments, um, that may or may not be able to be, uh, remedy in its, in their current state, but, and we can get into all that later, but, um, so that's basically the report right now. Um, everything's working at this point, um, as far as communication between the departments. And all that's for handling the call, just like we would if we, uh, were in the IT department. Um, and, uh, we got a couple in the forum, as a matter of fact, so, um, we're dispatching as they come in.
Okay, and you said a hundred tickets, I understand, or some of them already done, but they just never closed them out?
There were approximately twenty of those that were already done.
Okay, and, uh, and we're kinda?
Or they weren't done, but they had, time had expired on them, and they were no longer relevant.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Could you explain to me, you kinda mentioned what's going on, because I, I, if I was sitting over there, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't even know what.
Okay, I, you're correct, uh, we, uh, our IT guy resigned, and, and we didn't have a, a, a system anyway, so we, decided we would try another computer company, just to see how, if they can do it for us and save us some money. And, uh, I don't know if we, did, did we ever settle on a, uh, a contract? And she needs to know this.
Yeah, charges for that time period did not exceed what y'all normally would have budgeted out for, not before.
I think we was doing a thirty days, but they to get an analysis.
Well, we, we originally asked for thirty days.
Yeah.
If I could, we asked for thirty days, and then I think y'all came back and asked us if we could present that within a week, so we did, we have presented a.
Analysis, okay, that's.
Well, not just an analysis, but we have presented a, a, a contract to be looked at and discussed.
Okay, we, we're just gonna find out if it's favorable for us to do that, because if it saves us money or not, but. I appreciate you giving us an update, so.
Thanks very much.
And she's a little, now she knows.
Absolutely, and we'll be getting.
Oh, oh, yeah, certainly, she will be talking her, I'm sure.
Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, Ray, do you have any contract?
I will have to.
Okay, Scotty, make sure y'all, let's get a copy of that, so we can, so I can look at it and see what houses and everything, because I think.
Okay, if there are no more public comments, we're gonna go around the table, um, Mr. Gray, if you'll.
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. President, uh, let me, let me, let me, I do that at the end, since we got the snap out the way. Um, I don't know the day supervisor Hutchins, that we be going, we will, we'll be going to DC, and, uh. The ninth through the fourteenth.
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth, um, I just mentioned to the, uh, port director, I talked to the airport director, uh, to find out if they have anything that they want to submit for us to take to our congressional people. And I'm gonna talk to this board right now, uh, this is beginning of January, it's first week in, uh, second week in February, we gonna be going, so we need to get our, uh, 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 whatever we need to lot it for, we need to get it together and get a package where we can, uh, get to our congressional people. I know we're gonna be seeing, trying to see all of them, so if we got some that they need to know, we need to get a package. Uh, Mr. Doc, six last, last down road, that grass in the front, that M. Doc supposed to take care of? Uh, do they have a new commissioner there?
I, I, I don't know, I, you say that with that issue there, I've got an issue right on down from that too, down there, by a problem or, it's stolen. And they won't do anything about that either, and it would take us fifteen minutes, but it's on the state.
The reason I'm bringing it up is because I thought they had a new commissioner. Scott, do they have a new commissioner? Okay, the only thing I'm saying is this, uh, maybe we need to invite him here, where we can, uh, get a chance to meet him, he meet us, where we can get on the same page, because the last commissioner, I, I can't, remember the last time he was even here. And the communication really wasn't there with the last commissioner, so we, we need to get off on a better start with the new commissioner, where we can, uh, be able to get some of this stuff taken care of. Uh, I know mental health is, is a big issue, and I, I witnessed, shared, a mental health issue this morning on my way to the board meeting, uh, they was carrying a young man that I know personally to the court, I guess, and he had no business being in jail. He got a mental health problem, and the state, or whoever need to help him find, uh, 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 some kind of money, or whatever they need to find, where these people that really, really need some help can get out of jail and get the help that they need. Uh, I'm just going by what I heard, and I don't know if it's true, and I don't have a way of finding out, but this is what I heard over the street. And from people going in and out of the hospital, that the hospital is telling them that we got a lot of COVID issues in our community, I mean, a lot of them. And if it's a lie, and people coming out of the hospital saying that's what the hospital telling them. Uh, I wanna welcome our new county administrator. Uh, I wish we could have had the majority of our department heads here, where they could have actually met the county administrator, but I know she gonna, uh, set up a meeting, or I guess one-on-one with all of them, and, uh, get that straight, uh. I wanna wish everybody a happy new year, and since the last time we had a regular meeting, uh, we had quite a few deaths. So, my sentry goes out to the Daniels, the Rucker, the Hale, the Smith, the Whitney, the Smith, the Owens, the Davis, the Warner, and former coach, Nusser. His wife used to go on the school, but my sentry goes out to them, uh. I just wanna say this, and I don't want the president of this board to think what I did this morning was personal, because it wasn't personal. Uh, I think God have a way of doing what he gonna do, and I just pray God give you wisdom, knowledge, and understanding to be able to be the president for one year, and, and not personally, I don't want you to take it personally.
No problem.
Uh, I'm just gonna read this scripture in, uh, I, I, I just think, at the end of the day, if anybody need God, not only this city and this county, but this whole country, uh, need God, because we, we going in the wrong direction, people, but, uh, if my people which are called by my name should harm of themselves and pray and seek my face and turn from their wicked ways, then I will heal from heaven, and I will give, forgive their sins and heal their land. So, if any man ever need to be healed, is our community, and I pray that, uh, always been like this, whatever issues that come before this board, and, and I just believe this in all my heart, wants the majority win, then I'll move to the next issue, there ain't nothing personal. And, uh, to our new co- county administrator, they gonna be coming at you from every direction, and my, uh, suggestion is to you, just do what's right. And, Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchins.
Okay, I want to congratulate you on your new position, I know you do a good job. Um, you put a picked a better person, so, uh, welcome aboard, that's what I would like to say to you, county administrator. Um, Robbie?
Yes.
Have we went back and looked at the Eighth Pleasant Drive to see has it been cleaned up or anything?
It hadn't been done.
It has not, have they even obtained?
I'll look at it again.
Okay.
I'll be up to the holidays, beginning of the holiday, while we were all five years back then, but.
Scotty, did you send out a letter to him?
Sent for nine, five, eight, nine, today.
Today?
Yeah, we put sign all that.
I don't remember if I did.
So, it's supposed to be a public hearing?
Yes, ma'am, you wanna go ahead and take it on?
Yeah, if you please, well, we are.
Mr. President, uh, is anyone here on Eight Pleasant Road? Eight Pleasant Road, Eight Pleasant Road? Section fifty-five, Township Seven, North Range One West, PPIN one nine three nine nine. Anyone's here? Sorry, we need to first make a motion to have a, a public hearing.
All in favor?
Is anyone here for that, for, uh, Eight Pleasant Road, Eight Pleasant Road, Eight Pleasant Road? Doesn't appear to anyone to show up, so, uh, Supervisor, Hutchins, you wanna talk about this property?
Yes, I just wanted to say that this is a menace property, I think, um, last meeting, uh, two weeks ago, uh, Robbie brought some pictures sitting here to show us, and I'm sure y'all of us looked at it, we did look at it and see that it was a menace property, so, the next step for us to do is what, clean it up ourselves, or?
So, the next step would be to incorporate those pictures, obviously, did you, you have a copy of them, Robbie, did you? Robbie?
Yeah, Robbie does that.
Robbie, wanna get, get her a copy of those pictures? That needs to be done on the property.
So, they've had a lot.
There's some trucks and stuff like this.
Trucks, trucks, fire, yeah, yeah. Okay, trucker, you know, it's, it's a mess, uh, I can see where I'll get you the pictures, uh. I know the guy, I was in, in top three, uh, make a point to catch him in top three, and that, and that. You know, with he never, side out, we done, this is second time we've gone, this is not the first time.
Uh, um, well, we're gonna vote, I'll send them in to, uh, clean it up ourselves, or are you gonna give him a couple of days, but we're gonna go ahead and do it, the vote, because we're, we're gonna put him under the gun.
Yeah, I would like to, because.
Okay.
Yeah, so, back in August, I think we looked at it.
Yeah, I suggest, you know, yeah, let Rob talk to him again.
Yeah, once that's out, we can move forward.
Right.
I missed, I missed, what property that is?
Eight.
Eight Pleasant, Alpha Cranfield. I brought the picture last.
We wanna make a vote, give it him a time, let.
So, he already got it.
Yeah, let's give him a chance the next week, and we decide if we'll pay him or not.
Okay, we'll bring it up, we'll bring it up in the next meets.
Well, we go ahead and adjudicate it a menace.
Yeah.
And then you'll contact him and see if we can get a timeline, and if not, you go out there and clean, and little says that.
Yeah, okay, so we need a motion to.
Closing hearing.
Go ahead, close the hearing.
Closing hearing, adopt this a menace.
Public hearing.
Some of them.
Sorry.
Take them out, Mr. Milton. So, what, what's the address?
Eight.
Both carry, all right, um, public meeting closed? All in favor? All right, now we need a motion to declare Eight Pleasant Road a menace property.
Some of them.
Move by Ms. Hutchins, taken by Mr. Middleton. All in favor? Motion, hear.
The next thing I have, supervisor, I also brought this, I had this on there, that, uh, we will be attending Washington from February the ninth and fourteenth, and we need to get together and make sure that we have everything we need before we go to address our congressional people. Uh, I think I have something, and I just wanna make sure everybody else, if anything that we have, or any funding that we need, we can get that right away.
Okay, can, can y'all let me know what y'all have, at some point, so I can figure out, because I'm probably gonna go out on a west, either one of y'all going?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Uh, another thing, uh, I think we need to get approval for the county administrator to go to Jackson for the Midwell Conference.
Okay, mo- motion, move.
They made a lay of motion, uh, the county administrator to.
Second, Mr. Gray, second. Need discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
Uh, motion, hear.
Next thing is, I know we just spoke with the, uh, computer consultant, and, uh, the contract is out there. Uh, Scott, I know you reviewed, have you reviewed the contract?
I'm, right now, just searching it up, before I shoot the contract, see if it's over.
Yeah.
We probably in process also, need to look, maybe you reach out and see if, you know, if the interviews are still interest in the position. Without you. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Just reach out to see if someone's still interested, uh, Santos. You heard that, right? We, it, yeah. Oh, yeah, with the county administrator, and see, okay, because she doesn't know who the person is. We can get a report out. Okay, reach out and see if they may be still interested in the position. And that's all, hiya.
I guess, uh, clarity, uh, we like, wasn't no touch on that, just touching on that. My understanding, we were going through December, uh, just me, as president, we were gonna look at it and compare the cost of how everything was gonna compare to what we did, and, and I mean, that's what my mind was on, that, and, uh, so I hadn't had a chance to look at any costs and comparisons, I hadn't seen anything, so, before anybody make, I mean, I just make a suggestion, before we make a move, we need to actually compare, just, uh, the, 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 the. Just, uh, the, the, the situation was to allow them to come in, look at what they was gonna do, compared behind the I T people, and I mean, that's, that was my clear understanding, that, uh, what was gonna happen. But, that's how I say, but, uh, moving right along, uh, county administrator, I, uh, welcome you and you can kind of see things, uh, um, how it's going and you realize things go and people gonna come, but two things, one thing that we do have in place already, and you know, I, I, I suggest any tools we have that you need to use, it's like when people ask for something. I mean, um, we got a si- uh, system in place that we go and, uh, any departmental, department head, a department that wants something, they supposed to give what you prior to the meeting in a written request for what we want, so we'll have, so you can give us a better, uh, judgment on what happened. And I see sometime, you know, that'll get looked over, use it. That's why I was put there. Use that to keep up there, and one of the other things that me sitting as president, I seen, you know, um, I said to y'all that my twenty percent was coming to the table, and you know, we had some things, and I think everybody here is wanna keep it right and honest, but what I am gonna ask for, uh, is a motion, I mean, I don't know if it get a motion, second, I'll get it passed. Uh, when it comes to the county administrator, the lawyer, the road manager, I, I'll say any department head. I feel like to keep it cle- uh, clear and fair to everybody. I feel like to keep a lot of pressure off of those people who have appointed jobs. I feel like I would like to make a motion that if either one of us come to y'all for any request, that y'all should enter email and inform everybody, and that'll keep us from coming to the meetings, uh, with, with things not right, and including myself, that means, uh, if I come to you and ask you for it, look at something, uh, get a price on this and get a price on that, I shouldn't come to the meeting and my president be blindsided, or my right hand be blinded, so I think if we stay on one accord, so I don't know how the rest of the court feel about that, but I, I, cause you know, when it comes to communication, me sitting as the president, I could not call Kevin and say, I'm doing this, I could not call Adam and say, I'm doing that, that constitutes an illegal meeting. But the people who communicate, uh, I, I, if any, if my, any of my other supervisors and support, I would like to make a motion that when we do business, uh, with any of those folks, that, uh, they email the blind cop and the rest of the board on what we do. That's in the form of a motion.
Hey, I'm accepting a motion, but they're supposed to be doing that anyway. I'm accepting a motion, but that's the way it's supposed to be in, or?
All right.
You got any discussion, uh?
Discussion? Any discussion?
We all vote, really?
All in favor?
Ah, you know, folks, they had the same, right? But, uh, I'm sorry, but, uh, uh, and, and happy new year to everybody. And I look forward to actually trying to work and make things better for Adams County. We did have a tight year, we had some tight decisions, so you know, I'm coming to the table, uh, I'm sorry, uh, President Wilson, it just, I got it wetted off of me with, uh,
I know you wanna be back in here.
I, 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 I yield a floor.
I received a, um,
I'd like to ask Mr. Gaines a question back on what you asked for.
Yes.
You're saying if someone asks to get a price on striping the road, or get a price on whatever, building a road, whatever it may be, you want them to send a road report or written request, and I get the price and come bring it to the board, what, what?
I'm just, what, what I'm fair about is this, just to keep us from coming here, cause everything has to be unanimous, I mean, approved by a vote. To keep us from getting blindsided, to keep us on one accord, where everybody will know we'll be up to speed so we can make decision to keep us from tabling stuff, we'll all be on the same accord of what's going on. Like, uh, supervisor Gray said, it should happen upfront, but sometimes it just don't, and that's why I put it out there to give y'all the opportunity, yes, if I come to you, supervisor, Hutchins, Gray, Wilson, I think everybody know, and that way we'll get a chance to research and we can move forward with this. Is that clear, Brown?
Yeah, I just
That's feeling like a work order, that's feeling like the work orders that you
Yeah, I understand the work order, I'm just saying, when, like, you know, when getting, say, prices on this job, or whatever you may do, or whatever, and this and that, I thought that's what you get that, once I come here, I say, all right, I got a price on whatever road on striping, or you know, when you, you know, that come about, so if I, if I got an email on it saying, could you please get a price on this and present it to the board, then we'll all know what, what, you know.
Exactly. Well, I was assuming events, anything out of the ordinary, uh, would come up, your day-to-day operations should, should include that.
That's what I'm saying, but I think some of what he's saying is when you come
I'm not, I'm not asking him, but we not talking about every, everything that he does on day-to-day operation, I'm talking about things that affect the board that we were getting voted on. Just like I asked him, what day-to-day operation ain't me saying, will you get a price on a pavement? Road or drive, or will you get a price on striping?
Anything out of the norm.
Yeah.
Can I, can I ask a question while we all be? Adams County Road Plan two thousand and twenty-four, pretty much, not all, but pretty much everything that we adopt on a four-year road plan should be already in place. Now, if we wanna add something to it, it should be done in the board meeting.
Yeah.
Right? Okay, we already got a plan in place, how we gonna handle things? Is that not correct? So if, if we wanna deviate from the plan that we already have in place, then we come to the board and then we do it like this, right? Okay, thank you.
I just wanna clarify, I said.
Yes, sir.
You'd like to clarify it?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay.
All right, I received a letter from, uh, Paltland Community College, Mr. Milton King's term has expired, uh, on the board of trustees. Uh, they requested that he be reappointed.
Oh, indeed.
So, I wanna reappoint him, but you know, he's been, he's been on that board for thirty-three years, he's done a phenomenal job, and he was the first. I'm not done. He was the first resident of Adams County to be selected as chairman of board, so I think he's a tremendous asset to the board.
Okay, somebody needs to reappoint. You got Ricky and then, uh, Ms. Hutchins? All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
Also, in the past, we had discussed the scoreboard at Chester Willis Baseball Field. Um, I presented something to Scott from Coca-Cola, uh, have you had a chance to look over that, Scott? I think it's the best interest of the county, they wanna donate a scoreboard to the county at no charge to the county, uh, and, and low them putting vending machines throughout the county, I think it was like four vending machines. Um, so, and I've also spoken with Robbie, and road department has agreed to help hang and install that scoreboard. The scoreboard that is there is obsolete, uh, you can't get parts for it, it's no longer working. So it's the most feasible option for the county, uh, won't cost us anything.
Mr. President, supervisor, I'm gonna ask you a question. I'll make sure I'm on the same page. I understand when you say it's more vending machine throughout the county, so what's gonna happen to the ones that is already in the county?
We're not under contract.
So they gonna have to take theirs out?
The idea is you get exclusivity over the
I, I understand, I'm just making it plain and clear, well, they can understand. So the ones that already have vending machines in the county, if we agree to this, then they gonna have to remove their machine and we gonna have to cook.
Mr. President?
Go ahead.
Got a question?
Do we all go ahead and make a motion, then we have a discussion?
The vending machines that we have now, are they paying us anything for those vending machines? No.
Not that I know of.
Are we sure?
Obviously, I looked into the individuals, but
No, no, okay, and there's no contract.
Yeah, one time it was a local vendor where I was helping. It's no longer
Cause they've been here many, many years, and they've been doing this for many years.
They ain't gonna buy us a scoreboard?
No, they ain't gonna buy us a scoreboard, I mean, I just wanna make sure we don't, you know, there's a contract or not a contract, and we don't do something that's illegal and get ourselves in trouble, but if there's no contract, or they not paying us anything, or whatever, and they're not gonna buy us a scoreboard, I don't know, we hadn't contacted them, but I'm all for that, I, cause I think that's a good idea. That, that couldn't be a bad idea. But I think that's something to be looking, make sure there's no contract.
I'll make a motion pending legal review.
Okay, to, to get the scoreboard and replace the vending machine?
Yeah.
Okay. Seconded by Ms. Hutchins. Any more discussion? All in favor? Ah.
Um, I would also like to welcome you aboard, um,
Motion, carry.
The work that, the work that Mr. Lambert has done over the past few months is, is gonna, is gonna prove to be very beneficial to, to you being able to step in and go to work day one. Um, it was a mess before. I wanna thank him for what he's done, also, I've told you, he's, he's accessible and, and there to answer any questions, and I wanna thank Randy and Scott for all the work that they did. Uh, it was a rough time, and, uh, they, they worked hard and, and kept us out of a bind. Uh, we've made some cuts, we're not done. We'll have to make more, and, uh, you coming in with an open mind, it's gonna be very important. And, uh, I'm here for you if I can be in. And also, an item to be determined.
Mr. President, before you move on, uh, Mr. Milton?
Yes, sir.
Uh, everywhere I go, especially to next, I get asked about dugout, and, and to my knowledge, there's no money to do a dugout, right?
There's two dugouts there.
I'm talking, not the dugout, the, uh, dressing room, or whatever they get dressing. And, uh, there's no money to do that, right? So, uh, it's amazing now, we gonna have a state-of-the-art, everything gonna be state-of-the-art, and we still gonna have the same molded, fasted dressing room. That's crazy. We, we, we cannot do that. If, if we gonna do this, we need to do it right and do the whole thing, and don't leave out the dressing room. I understand all about it, but naturally I use the dressing room, but it don't smell right, it don't look right, we got to make it right.
You know, we had
I, I know we short on money, but we need to talk to some of these contractors in the community, or whoever the case may be. We need some help, we need to ask for it, but we need to get there right.
We had discussed this before, and, uh, they're trying to figure out where we are on the money to close out the bathrooms, which are a necessity as well.
Do you want to say, could you explain to the new county administrator what we talking about in yesterday's short with the bond issue and the decoration and all, I mean, the park or whatever, you seen your
We did a bond issue last year for recreation, uh, recreational improvements, majority of it went to Chester Willis Baseball Field. It's, it's a county-owned facility that Natchez High School and Cathedral High School used to play baseball. It's the only park, the ballfield park, that is owned by the county. Uh, it was a liability, it was in terrible, terrible shape, um, and our hopes were that we could bring in more recreation into the county with this. You know, our hope is to get Alcorn, Coen, and some of those schools to come in and play a couple of games a year, so that some of these people who've never seen a college baseball game have the ability to see a college baseball game. County-owned facility that's had no money put into it, how many years? Forty, thirty? Uh, we also made improvements to every county-owned park. We made improvements to the rodeo ring. We made some, uh, we did some work to digitize all the documents in Chancery Clerk's office. So, uh, we're at the end of the project with Chester Willis, and we're trying to get bathrooms finalized, and there is a locker room issue. But as everyone in here knows, the cost of everything has gone up. Your dollar only goes so far. Uh, our, our, our architect and our contractor out there have worked tremendously to try to get as much as they can, and they've done a phenomenal job. So where we're at right now is they're trying to get the bathrooms finalized, and then we're gonna see how much money was left to try to redo the one locker room and add one to it, so that each team will have a locker room, whoever's playing there. If it's a home and away, or two home teams, if A C's playing Cathedral, somebody would have a locker room where they can go in and change clothes. If Coen comes in, Alcorn, whoever, they have a locker room, they can go in and change clothes. So that's where we're at. And I'm sure Ms. Lewis or whoever has the, or Shaq, somebody has the remaining funds left.
Well, hold on, let me, I'm gonna holler right now. Does the remaining funds left in the, the only remaining funds left in the bond is the funds that I had set aside to do my work that I did not go over budget, and I'm still working. So I mean, I think Shaq, he have it, so I can tell you what the remaining funds in the bond is. The ones that was left in the part that I had to do the things that we had on the list, and election came up, so I had to stop working, but the money set aside has not been over the budget, but it is working, I mean, it's, it's going down because we are in progress right now at the ring and stuff like that, so you can look at it, but I can tell you that much right now.
So, maybe you check the amount to see if it's there?
Uh, and I don't know the exact amount, but I do know that it was on the funds that
Budgeted and
Budgeted, budgeted, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, 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 right in that budget.
Budgeted?
Yeah.
But we talking about the reminded funds left of that bond? How much of the reminder involved?
There's specifically for
Right.
Yeah.
What's earmarked for each project?
Each body.
And, uh, on the, uh, dressing room thing, uh, uh, I don't know how much it's gonna cost, but, or, between, uh, the Natchez High School board, maybe Cathedral, maybe even the city and us, I'm sure we could come to some kind of agreement where, where we can get that done. Uh, where, where, no, we have to put out all the money, so. But, um,
It's not, hold on.
No, that's supposed to be working.
Okay, uh, anything else, uh, Ms. Milton? Okay, um, hey, you have anything? Hey, you don't have anything? Randy?
We have a new, uh, contract amendment from Core Civic, does not in any way affect the county, um, it's just internal
Okay. Need a motion for Core Civic?
No move.
Pass through?
Second.
And, Mr. Milton, any discussion? Take a vote, all in favor?
Ah.
Um, we need to have Judge Barber certification from his justice court judge's training course, spread across the minutes, please.
All right, any motion, it's ready. Judge Barber's?
Second.
Okay, who made the motion? Angela, Mr. Gaines, any discussion? All in favor? Motion, carry.
I need permission to travel to my, um, mandatory training for Chancery Clerk, um, training for our conference, it is February the seventh through the ninth, and it is in Wichita, Mississippi.
Right, what do you say?
No, I, yeah. Motion for Ms. Lewis, huh? By Mr. Gaines, taken by the session. Any discussion? All in favor?
Yeah, let's see. And I have a new hire at Chancery Clerk's office, it is Melissa Stotner. She will be starting on January the fifteenth at a rate of sixteen eighty-three per hour, or thirty-five thousand annually.
Somebody go?
Two. Glenda retired, and then Sarah Delaney, whenever to the D A's office.
Motion for a new hire, so, Ms. Randy? Gaines, Ms. Hutchins, any discussion? Y'all already had it. All in favor?
I think that's all that.
Motion, carry.
Randy, when you say sixteen, what is the, uh?
Thirty-five thousand annually, sixteen eighty-three per hour.
That's all you're, you, okay, normally we go to Mr. Slower, but he has stepped out, uh, would you like to give a report of you having a report for today?
He likes to do this, I hope, and he, pardon his, uh, or this weekend, just, uh, get my computer set up, this, uh, corporate is, is working on getting this set up in the, um, in the office.
Okay, well, congratulations once again, uh, glad to have you, I enjoyed your interview, and I think you'll do a good Okay, well, congratulations once again, uh, glad to have you, I, I enjoyed your interview, and I think you did a good job, thank you. Hi, Mr. Slower, you ever report?
Uh, just one thing, the, uh, for Jalen Jones, we have a contract, or a grant extension to reach their numbers from NDA, so I need permission, uh, for the board to sign it. It gives us another year to complete the job requirements on that grant.
So, oh, yeah.
Uh, Mr. Gaines, and then seconded by Mr. Brady, listen. Motion, uh.
Mr. President.
Any discussion?
Mr. President, so they're giving them another year to get up the speed, with how many employees they need to.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion, here.
And that was, just to correct the minutes, that wasn't Jalen Jones, that was Jones.
I don't know, right?
That's why I'm sitting here going.
I, I, I looked, I looked more too, but I figured it was right.
Three.
I knew he knew.
Spot just wanted to draw about that.
Well, you were just comparing them.
And he, and he spread it.
Oh, really?
Across.
Oh, yeah. Well, that's always, he gotta go ahead and pay. And then they assign, he is signing, oh.
Yeah.
You need to sign it.
We need.
We're in the head. And I forgot, put his name on the post here.
Yeah, it should be.
And I just shared the breakdown of the bond readiness.
All right, Mr. Slower. You have anything? All right, um. My report need pretty short, I guess, um. Once again, we'd all welcome our new county administrator, and I'm, I'm glad to have her, and I do also appreciate the work that Scott, Randy, and Paige have done to try to fill that void for the last years. I, I know it's really been tough for them, but they, they managed it well. Um, our biggest issue right now as a board is, we are very short on money, and, uh, and like Mr. Milton said earlier, we'll, we'll continue to make cuts throughout the year, uh, in different ways, uh, through attrition, uh, somebody retires, uh, we need to figure out whether we need a replacement for somebody. Um, and, and we'll, and we'll just go about it in, in, in that way, or somebody resigns, or whatever. Um, a couple of things I had, um. I've been checking, and this has been going on, it seems like two years, about the safe room, um, showers, outside showers. Uh, we, I think the best bid we got was seventy thousand dollars, and it was over a year and a half ago. I think we can get one for fifty-four thousand a unit, put together with four showers, four doors, four sinks, uh, and a, a set on a pad, uh, there by the safe room, with, already has a heater in it, and air conditioning, and heat. Um, I'm, I'm gonna get, I'm gonna get a real quote for y'all to see, they're gonna send me something real, not just a, a number. So, but, um, is that something we budgeted before? Scott, or is that just something we talked about, we were budgeting?
Just talked about.
And it might be, you know, I'll get the bid, and it was a sigh whether we're gonna be able to do that, I know we've been asking for that for a long time, um. And with that, if we have the safe room for some, well, I know that the reasons are, I wasn't here, but, uh, he was gonna call section, put showers in, and they didn't do it, and now we realize when we have a, a, some kind of disaster, people have to come up here and maybe stay a week or two, and they don't have to wear a shower, or they have to walk. Now to the swimming pool or something, not bathing, swimming pool, but we have showers over there. But, it's a pretty good walk, yes, sir.
When you say you gonna get bids, what, what, what you mean?
Well, we, we've been, uh, we've, we've received bids, and we, we really didn't like any of them, so we all agreed that we, we would try to get a company that actually builds a module that can be set there, and, 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 uh, instead of, uh, trying to get somebody lucky to build something that we don't know where we can get.
Okay, uh, Mr. Turner. I don't really understand what's going on, but just make sure when you and the president get together that everything is legal. Cause I know fifty-four thousand dollars is way over, what, what we have to bid out. So just make sure everything is legal.
Well, we, we, we received a bid, really liking, we decided we're gonna go, try to go a different direction. Basically, and that, and that, this is the only one that's come through that anybody's told me anything on was, what this one could be built for. And I, I want, I want stacks on and everything, so we all look at it, and determine that's the way the private want to go. Um. Probably didn't really, uh, do anything to do with you, but I wish you would ask somebody. The crossing at Liberty, on, on Liberty Road, the railroad crossing, just under the Natchez Trace?
They redone that crossing, it got worse.
At, yeah, it's terrible. I mean, literally knocked the front end off the car.
And I talked to the city owner, I talked to Justin about it, yeah, they just, they redone the cross, and it kinda works.
It, it, it's terrible, everybody, everybody dies over the right lane, crosses, and, 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 it, it eventually gonna be a wreck.
I'll check back, but I had to talk to the city about getting home to, but, uh, it's about like M dot, you know, which only six.
Yeah, uh. Okay, I've got a, uh. Who is? Uh-huh. Okay, then all we're doing here is.
You can have some phone.
Who, who we grant funds?
Uh, the constable warrants, uh, county funds.
County bond.
Account, sorry, you said, I thought you said phone. No, they want a phone. And, uh. That's, did you say they have not had county phones in, in the past? Uh, the Samuel Minor with Veterans Affairs is also asking for the same thing. And computer repair access, and access to email, which he, I would think that would come with the.
So I, I already emailed, um, in a work order on the computer repair, as well as the email access, I sent that in earlier. The only thing the board has taken is just.
So the question is whether we're gonna allow county phones to, uh, Samuel Minor, Veterans Affairs, and, uh, Mr. Davis, the constable. What kind of package are we all pro, pro, pro phones, do we?
There's two, we have two different companies that are providing services, some are still with ceasefire, and some, uh, whenever to Verizon. I know that some of the road department employees were having some problems, and so.
You have our phone?
Uh, Corvett has them.
Yeah, okay.
And, um, so, I think we have two service providers right now, and I know, I don't know if Jay's been working on that, or if it's just Aaron. And so Randy had sort of one before, was trying to get, like I said, some of the road department employees.
So is it a per, per phone contact, or some, we have so many phones straight up?
I'm not sure.
We wanna.
There was a couple of people that y'all have, were, had county phones, but I have to look back in minutes to see who they were.
You know, remember that?
Uh, it was, no, we had, uh, problems, cause, uh, I know many of Robert had, uh, some, and some for the road department, but I think Corvette should have the list that, uh, she said we all had.
Did you all have a list of, you know, about two thousand pound of phone?
Yeah.
I just, I just said Corvett, I don't have.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. On the way to the next meeting for this one?
Yeah. Yeah.
Traditionally, the phones went under the IT director, and so they kind of controlled that in the road, so it's a little bit of communication.
I don't have one, I, I have a lot of trouble just keeping up with one, so I'm not too. Something about that, oh. Okay, um.
I'll let you know when I have your background.
Okay. Anything else we're supposed to do here, I know that's something. Office of the Circuit Judge, Deborah Blackwell. Let's see if I can get to the meat of what she's asking.
Should be an order, I believe. What is this she asking?
Uh. Private, oh, she's, uh, does not, she's not liking the service we're getting with the, uh, uh. Okay, I, I don't know what we're gonna do about that as far as.
Well, you.
We're talking, it's not the, the cleanup service since we, uh.
Well, well, Mr. President, let, let me say this. Uh, and don't disrespect to the judge, but the judge don't even know the setup, that these people supposed to work one day a week, and, and, and to my knowledge, they doing exactly what they supposed to do. Now, I don't know what the email sent out to the department head to explain to these people that this company is only working one day a week, and we got two employees supposed to be doing whatever. Now we got a county administrator that can monitor what's going on. Uh, my thing is this, and I know people gonna get mad, but, uh, grown folks need to clean up behind themselves. I, I just don't see why you eat in your office, and you do all this stuff in your office, and you, and you expect somebody to come clean up behind you. Grown folks need to clean up behind themselves. And stop making a mess, and then it ain't gonna happen to you.
Oh. For, for years, we've had people cleaning up these nine or ten buildings, and, uh, to cut expenses, we eliminated most of those, and we, we've got two full-time employees, and their job is, and I don't know that's gonna be part of your purview, I'm sure, uh, uh, they were, uh, Randy was trying to handle that, and Scott, but, um, they need to stay busy than ones we have, there, there are some people, they need to, places that they need to get on a little bit better, cause, but they have, they have time to do that, uh, but nobody's really been able to monitor, cause everybody here's got a full-time job.
And emails have been sent out to all the department heads describing, you know, which employees are, are supposed to be covering which buildings, and contact information for them, and for our, uh, company we've contracted with, so everybody should be pretty well informed about.
And, and it's still, we're still trying to tweak that, so now that you're here, maybe you can, uh, ex, explain to someone, when you get a complaint, so you, you need to get this a little bit harder, you, you've got time to do it, so, uh, okay, I'm gonna, let me see what's going.
Yeah. You need to get a, yeah.
Okay, uh.
We're gonna listen, just keep listening.
Okay, this is another, uh, from Judge Blackwell. She's, uh, appointing a, uh, wants to appoint an Accountability and Recovery Court Case Manager, Duchess Prater. Um. She's also wanting, I don't, should we do these separately, Scott?
Is there something all that has, there's, there's something all behind it?
This is just something you need to put in the minutes, okay? She wants to appoint Duchess Prater. Or appointing and setting aside of her Deputy Court Administrator, Judge Drake Felicia, Felicia Fleming? Problem with that is, i- is this the same one that came through last time, that the amount for it, a little excessive?
I think Felicia's the same that's been there.
No changes. Okay. Okay.
Mr. President. Mr. President. Uh, so one person took the other person's place, so the other one, that's a new position?
I think Felicia's.
Felicia is taking somebody else's place, but the other one, is that a new position for the judge?
I'm not aware of that.
Okay, the, the thing I want to be, be real careful on this order is that, uh, the salaries are in here, and I wanna make sure they concur with what was in the past, we're not giving anybody raises, is that? Okay.
Make sure they're not new position, Mr. President.
Uh, Accountability and Recovery Court Duchess Prater, forty-five thousand dollars, who was she replacing, or is it she?
She was already, she worked for Judge Drake, she was Judge Drake's, um.
Judge Sanders, or she worked for Judge Drake in the past?
Drake, she was Judge Drake's coordinator, yes.
Who was the court administrator for, for Sanders? I want, I wanna make, it's forty-five thousand dollars.
Mr. President, we can't, uh, pay. She says she was, so what do you mean?
She no longer works for Judge Drake.
So Judge Drake got somebody else?
Yes.
So now she's going where?
Judge Blackwell.
So did Judge Blackwell let somebody go to open up position for her?
That I do not know. The only question I have that left for Judge Blackwell is Matt, yes, and he, yeah.
And he's still there?
Yeah, he's at the DA's office.
So before we can do this, somebody need to get in touch with the judge, and make sure that this position is being filled, and he's not a new position? And we don't have no.
Scott, who needs to look over this and find out, we're, we're, nobody should be getting a raise. Whatever it is, it's gonna, uh, stay as it was, um. Cause we, we're not gonna prove any changes.
That's a code, though, right?
Yes.
After the council, we had to go and get, get.
All right, Scott, this letter from Delta Energy. Have you got a copy of it, from Delta Energy? Yes. I need to read. Do we need to put this on the minutes, or are you already aware of this? Geez. I wonder why we did that. Are there? Okay, did, uh, neither one of them have it? The constable didn't have a phone? Or what do I mean? And. What about the, uh, Veterans Affairs? Okay, uh, apparently neither, uh, the constable nor the county affair, uh, uh, Veterans Affairs had a county phone. So they're asking, both of them are asking to authorize them to have a county phone.
Is he a finance deputy?
There's a deputy to sell. Davis have a phone, does a deputy have a phone, the constable? Uh, uh, from the sheriff's office?
No, I wouldn't think so, I don't have that for sure, but that's.
All right, I guess we'll do these separately, um. A request by, um, the Veterans Affairs Officer, Mr. Minor, uh, I need a motion to get him a cellphone.
There's a, this can see what it is, and what's the reason, uh, I mean, because neither one of them had a phone, and not, I, I won't have anything they need, but we need to see the real reason, cause nobody else had it.
Do you wanna handle that, uh, and, and let us know?
Yeah.
That would be, uh, Samuel Minor, Veterans Affairs, and, uh, the constable, and we'll, we'll take it up in the next meeting. All right, I think, uh, this is from, uh, the Mayor Dan Gibson about the, uh, bridge somewhat closure, uh, on Canal Street. He's just, I guess, letting us know that, uh, the weight limit has changed, and what they're gonna do to fix it later, they haven't found that out yet, so I don't guess we really need to take any action on that. All right, uh, this is from Mississippi Department Archives and History. All right, uh, this is from Mississippi Department of Archives and History. They wanted to let us know that the Shaw Nasser House, uh, was entered into the national register as a historic place on December fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three, somehow on the national register. Need a motion.
We are approved.
Okay.
They're just letting us know that.
Okay. Holy Family Catholic Church has also been. Rose Hill Missionary Baptist Church. A little missionary Baptist church. National Civil Rights Moratorium, property submission, that sounds kind of.
They, they just letting us know about this, cause all this in the sense, right?
Yeah, no, you know, it came through Department of Archives and History, we had to approve it, we approved it last time, and so I guess they, we approved it on, uh, well, it had to be recorded as a part of our, we didn't approve, but it was recorded for that one minute.
All right, this already been, I came over and it's, uh, Delta Energy, uh, Adams County, for the five hundred eighty-eight thousand six hundred rail improvements.
What the date is?
Oh, this, this letter was dated November the seventh. Do you remember reading that one across, across the minutes?
I don't.
Do we need to read that one?
It's always, you know, they're, they're gone.
Closeout document.
As for the rail improvements.
Job not created.
Scott, Scott, do you need anything about the Delta?
Excuse me?
Delta head, we think I did.
Adams County Contract Exploration Job for Delinquency Zones Lumber.
Yeah, we got approved a request to increase the time period to forward this particular grant.
Do I have?
We've put in a request to extend this grant period.
Okay.
We also forward this over, it's part of the ongoing dispute with the, with the, with that client closure of that project.
Oh.
And we've talked to this person's boss.
Okay, um. Do you, do you have anything to tell us about what's going on with Delta, or that you can discuss, or the former Delta, or?
Yeah, well, I guess.
Yeah.
Uh. Peak that's open or whatever, uh.
Well, you're not, is it, is this something we need to be exact session about?
Well, it, it does happen with the, with the lease agreement, so I don't know if it. I can give you an update on what is public information, is what, what I do, so. The, uh, Phibro, which is, uh, Philip's brother, longstanding company, purchased all of the assets, the hard assets of Delta, uh, Delta Energy, which in my opinion was the best-case scenario for all of us, they have history in operating facilities like this, and they intend to continue to operate, uh, and uh, potentially put in some additional investment and, uh, and, uh, bring those, uh, jobs back, uh, back online as they, uh, as they start, uh, start doing that, so. Long story short, what could have been, uh, uh, a, a, uh, we, we avoided a disaster, in my opinion, uh, help with, uh, we had several entities that were looking at it. Uh, Phibro's probably our, like I said, our best-case scenario in it, in the situation, everything from uh, just general scrappers were looking at it to, uh, to operating entities, and, uh, and they're excited about, uh, having the property. Uh, both Scott and I have, have been in lengthy discussion and communication with, uh, with Phibro management over, uh, really since the, since the sale, and, uh, and they're interested in continuing, uh, or establishing a new, uh, a new lease agreement with the, uh, with the county, and, uh, so we shouldn't see any, uh, any hiccups regarding that. To my knowledge, uh, as we, as we sit here today, uh, the only outstanding items with Delta Energy, uh, uh, they're, you know, all of their lease payments are up to date, uh, and they've obviously got a, a, uh, twenty twenty-three tax bill that's, uh, that's due, and then, uh, that, you know, just came out, and then, uh, and then the matter that y'all, that Scott was just discussing on there, uh, they, they agreed to create the ninety-two jobs, as we, as we talked about, they got to either seventy-two or seventy-four, I don't remember the exact number off, off the top of my head, was the highest that they got, and, uh, and so they will have some liability regarding that on a pro rata share, uh, and, uh, unless N B A wants to transfer that over to the, uh, to the new, uh, operating entity, which they probably wouldn't and shouldn't, and, and we'll have to, uh, have to figure that out, that piece out, but.
Excuse me, Mr. President, okay, what, what do you mean by transfer?
Yes, so, I, I mean, as they, uh, as they buy the, uh, the assets and the business, and their agreement to create jobs, you know, they could end up in a situation where N B A just looks at it and says, okay, well, let's, let's uh, give them an opportunity to, to create that, that job number. We don't know that, um, to date, but we've asked for the extension, if they don't give the extension, then they are liable for a portion of that, of those funds.
So when you say extension, how long?
Uh, Delta Energy, what we asked for is an additional, is an additional year, we asked for that before all of this was taking place. So.
All right, thank you.
So, how long was Delta Energy here, nine years, eight years, nine?
Uh, nine.
Okay, and the ten years for the payment of the taxes is up next year, right?
Uh, actually, it'll be up the year after next.
Oh, but we're not offering any extensions on that?
No, you can't, you can't.
Good, okay, that's something for me and Mr. Gray, I don't worry about it.
Yeah, so, so any new equipment that they bring in is, is eligible for a payment, and I, I wanna clarify that, so
Billy Humphries.
Just for, for everybody's purposes, they have, you know, Delta Energy previously paid, you know, three hundred thousand dollars annually in their lease payments for the, for the facility, and roughly anywhere from three, two hundred to three hundred thousand dollars in, in taxes, in, in taxes, in addition, in addition to that, so I, you know, they, they have, uh, you know, so their, their liability out there has been anywhere about six hundred thousand dollars that, that the county annually has, has benefited, uh, in one way or the other, so, but, uh. So.
Oh, I think that's all we need now, but you, if you got something for.
Executive session, okay.
Um, the only other thing I have left, I'm, I'm sending around to the rest of the board members is, uh, um, Sam Minor took a job at, at the Veterans Affairs Officer, so, uh, Brad Bradford is asking Billy Humphries to take over the duties that, uh, Sam Minor was doing, and that's, uh, um, he calls it a statement of work, which is, have title for that, uh, and I, I, we need to spread that across the minute, and, uh, have a motion to approve it, uh, Mr. Slow.
You have that sheet ready?
Yeah. I don't know, I haven't looked at it, uh, Mr. Gordon.
Have you looked at this guy? No, he hasn't looked at it.
The employee.
Mr. Minor, uh, is at the Veterans Affairs Office now, and Billy Humphries is gonna take over his duties for Brad.
Is that kind of contract that he does?
Yes.
This is the same as on that, or this is different?
This is probably the same one.
I don't know, I didn't know that you didn't look at it. Well, pending, uh, Mr. Slow's.
I'm sure it's the same.
So what, it looks very similar.
We can move on, what I, we'll do is I'll make a motion approving, uh, the transfer of seven miles to Billy Humphries' duties pending legal review.
Okay, motion by Mr. Gaines. Second by Mr. Middleton, any discussion?
Put that opposite of what he's saying.
Yeah, that's what I can say, cause you say Sam Miles to Billy, uh, for this, Billy Humphries to, to Sam Miles duties.
I guess.
Yeah.
Okay, no, any discussion, so, okay. All. Take a vote? All in favor? Aye, aye, ahs have it. All right, I believe that concludes my report in, uh, motion for closed termination. Moved by Mr. Gaines, seconded by Mr. Hudson, all in favor? Uh, motion here.